It's a red light. All right, welcome to our meeting this morning. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are going to start off with a public hearing on the vacation of an alley. Laura, are you ready to proceed?
Yes, the advisory plan commission originally heard petitions on June 26th. And then there we go, recommendation, positive recommendations were presented to the county commissioners on July 2nd. As a recommendation to vacate the alleys, the today's hearing was properly published in the Western Wayne News in Richmond Plating Item. I have confirmation proof of publication present. The first proposed ordinance is number 2025-005, which regarding vacating part of two platted alleys in the town of Williamsburg. And then the second one is ordinance number 2025-006, part of two platted streets. Proposal to vacate those two platted streets in the town of Jacksonburg. Those ordinances, those proposed ordinances are before you.
All right.
Do you have any questions for me?
Well, let's start with 2025-005 in Williamsburg. Is there anyone here to speak either for or against the proposed ordinance of vacation of two platted alleys? Anyone?
Yes. Shannon Merkamp is available.
Yeah.
Do you wish to speak? You don't have to if you don't want to.
We're needing the alleyways shut off for leverage for our sewer. Because there's no water or sewer that runs in Williamsburg. And everybody in Williamsburg is having the same problem. Everybody's sewers just overflowing everywhere. And the alleyways in the back half are already shut down on both sides anyhow. So there's no way in or out besides behind my house is the only one that's open.
Could you state your name and address?
Shannon Merkamp, 8285 Main Street, Williamsburg, Indiana.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else wish to speak on this vacation? Questions from the commissioners? Steve, do you have any comments?
Just understand that under statute-
There are four things that you are to consider when vacating this. These are the same things that the plan commission considers and hears testimony on. And as you see in your handout, the plan commission has indicated that this vacation would not be adverse to the area on those four different points. Do we have to have findings on each of those or just adopt the ordinance?
Because the recommendation from planning is to vacate.
Correct.
They meet the criteria and they're recommending, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
They considered each of those in the original resolutions that were continued until last second.
Did you have anybody at the meeting that was in opposition to it?
We did not.
Okay. Any other comments on this issue in Williamsburg? If not, is there a motion on ordinance 2025-005?
I'll make an ordinance to approve ordinance number 2025-005, vacate lots or alleys.
A motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor of the motion signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right. So there is a document here to sign for this.
How many, how many do you mean to sign?
Do you just need one copy, Laura?
I just need one copy that you all sign.
Okay. Okay, it's the original, that's what we're just doing. Okay. Let's go on to 2025-006. Were the right body at the meeting that was in opposition to this one?
No one was in opposition to it.
And this one is in Jacksonburg, right?
That's correct.
Is there anyone here wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to this vacation for 2025-006 in Jacksonburg? Would you like to speak? Could you state your name and address, please?
Russell and Helen Pearson, 1762 Sugar Street, Cambridge City, Indiana. Actually, it's Jacksonburg.
Right.
We're asking for two parcels of land to be vacated. One of them is North Street. If you drive by, it's pretty obvious. Fifty-five years, there's been a fence gone down the middle of that. And so we'd like to have that split between us and our neighbor. Then on Kepler Road, Kepler Road is 66 feet wide till you get to Sugar Street. Then it chokes down to 33 feet.
Okay.
Our neighbor owns the south half. And we're asking for that north half to be vacated. That's all.
Had that been vacated earlier at that?
The south half of what used to be called Main Cross Street, now Kepler, was never officially vacated. This is a unique situation that has been in existence for over 100 years.
So when he says it goes down from 66 to 33, it's been that way? Never was plotted originally?
It was originally plotted as a 66-foot wide street that deadened on the, on the west end of what used to be Main Cross Street. But a survey was done well over 100 years ago that took in half of that street. It's all the subsequent owners that owned half of that street. So we're like pursuing the vacation of the north half of the street.
So normally if we vacated an area, it would go half to, to the property owner on one side and half to the other property owner?
That's correct.
Or is that the case with this 33 feet?
No, it would not be.
Does that, the other half?
Yeah, because the, the, Gerards own the south half, don't have the right to half of the-
Of the other half.
Half.
Okay.
Because they already have half, right?
They already have their half.
Okay.
Through no fault of their own. So.
All right. Commissioners, questions, comments?
I have no questions. If there's no opposition, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2025-006, vacant part of two platted streets in the town of Jacksonburg, Indiana.
And I'm sick of that.
We have a second, a motion and a second. And the plan commission found all of the necessary findings, that it won't impact anything else. Correct. We're good with that. If there are no further comments, let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. So we will complete the paperwork and this will, the vacations are approved. You were reporting that way.
That's correct. You know, we have assigned each of the county commissioners. We need to sign one of these documents, these documents, and then Mr. Volter will sign. And we'll have to report it.
Thank you. Mark, you were signing this down?
Thank you.
Shannon, excuse me, Laura.
Take care.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything else for us today? All right. It's done.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thanks for coming in. Okay, we've got our quarterly elected official department head meeting that will be starting at 9:30. So hopefully we'll have enough to keep the meeting going until 9:30. Obviously, oh, yes, we do.
Yeah.
All right. Let's go to Ron. You're more than two hours ahead of your scheduled time on, we're ready for you.
I think I sent you a timeline on the process, if you will, of the two East Main Street properties there are two. And I have a resolution here that would start the process. Point appraisers.
And did you and Steve resolve the issue of whether they need to be appraisers or members of our staff that have knowledge of the estate?
The statute basically gives you three choices. People regularly engaged in appraisers, licensed appraisers under file 25. And/or employees of the unit that are familiar with value, property values.
Okay.
In the past, we've typically used one appraiser and one employee. Except on the leased value property, we use two. We use the township, or the county assessor. What lease va-
That was for the radio town project out at the highway garage. That's a little different maybe. So.
But he is right, in the past, we have used.
Okay.
We've used, I think, sometimes my clients, sometimes Dick Lee, and usually Steve and-
Does it, if it's an appraiser, does it need to be somebody that does commercial property?
Does it say?
That's just pretty, pretty general. Okay. Which is a pleasure. You want to go with an appraiser?
I suggest that we use a certified appraiser. Agreed.
It's a bit unusual. I mean, usually we're not, you know, if our deed sales and design improve.
Argue about the minimum value, the whole point.
Tax rules. This is a property that could easily generate some revenues, some wealth and significance.
Could, I don't know that it will, but we'll find out. And that's the whole point, right? Give everybody an opportunity. Okay, so do we need to do anything other than just agree that the point?
Yeah, I think I, Laura said you- I go with the resolution yesterday.
Ron, it's been, it's been one of those weeks that you may have, and I didn't see it. Plus, I changed my emails. I'm not sure if I'm switching back and forth.
I'm sure, you know, your email addresses. That wasn't exactly, it's awesome. Okay, this is pretty straightforward. It just says that you determine that the property isn't needed for governmental purposes. And it's continued ownership of the property by the county. The burden, similar to obviously, something like that. So you can take a look at those, it's straightforward. I've got the legal description that I'll attach. I wanted to verify that with Nancy in the plat room, and I think my assistant did this morning. It's resolution 2025-007. You gain the property is owned by the county, which we need to make sure that, get that done. I own the lease.
Yeah, I've got the tax sale certificates here.
It should be a tax sale deed already issued.
Okay. I don't know that yet, so.
I think it is. I checked with Selena a couple, a few weeks ago.
Okay.
So I'll, I can, I can do that. So in any event, first thing we'll have to do is get the tax deed recorded. The name of the county. It's not there now. I've got a copy of the property card and all that. That shows prior ownership, so. And then we follow that process. And you can see that process is fairly attenuated because of the procedures now. It may not go that long. It's based on a procedure that I can think worked pretty well on one, in one occasion that I had to use it to allow cross bidding.
So what is the relationship then between the appraisals and any minimum bid that is required? Because I'm thinking of our previous deed sales.
The relationship is that you have to have the appraisals before you determine a minimum bid.
Okay.
That's all it says. It says, yeah, it has to be based on the appraisals. It says it has to be the average of the two.
So the appraisals could say that it's worth a thousand dollars.
The statute was stripped of a lot of its substance, and I think the idea was to give more flexibility discretion to the people.
Okay, okay.
But, but wouldn't it be prudent for us to not sell it less than the appraised values?
Or a percentage thereof. I don't know that 100% is necessarily, but I think you need to wait and see the appraisals.
Sure. And I, I don't disagree except for-
What's the point of getting the appraisals then if you're going to sell it less than?
If it's too, if, if, well, I think that's, that's the point. But I think what Ron just said is the point of having the appraisers is that you have to because of the statute. So I understand, I just don't want to own two vacant lots that we have to maintain for-
Have to mow.
I, I, I agree with that too.
Obviously, it ought to have some value based on their location.
Sure, no, I would agree.
And I guess it all depends on who all, you know, if, if it's a competitive bid. You know, if it's only one person, it's an adjacent property owner.
Well, we're not, we're not doing it on anybody's property owners.
Right, we're doing, we're doing it locally.
Well, I'm just saying if that person is the only one that shows up.
Right, right.
Sure. Then it makes sense to sell it less than, because it's an auction, right? But if it's a competitive bid, you can have a minimum bid of-
So I think maybe a-
A percentage of it.
Let's see what the, what the appraisal is.
We can see what the appraisal is and then-
We'll go from there.
Remember, we talked about we would only sell these properties together, we wouldn't sell them separately. Can that just simply be in the advertisement that you've got to take them public?
Yeah, okay. Because basically, they derive from a building that had a common wall.
Right.
I mean, if the legal talks about one calls an inch and a half this way or that way.
Yeah.
So Nancy was, that is a little interesting, I think. You know, call. So that's where it is. But like I say, the example I had, I mean, there must have been 10 cross bids. And when, the process started in October and ended up in January. So I don't think we're going to be in that.
I don't think we want it to go that long. And each one of those bids then has to be read at the public meeting?
No, it's, it's an ongoing sale. It's not bids receiv-, well, I mean, you open the bids and I think you open them as you go. The bids are sealed.
So how's this go, how's this work again? So it's not a, the day of auction?
No, you just say come on this day and eat bid.
You look at your resolution, you, or look at the timeline, we will determine a date when bids will start to be received. And we'll press that, but I think first, before we do that, we need the appraisals.
Okay.
And then-
And we need to confirm that we have-
Is there a closing date for bids?
Yes, there is.
But typically, if there is any interest among competing parties.
You just let them keep going back and forth.
Well, and they always wait till Eve or the closing date to make their bid.
Right, right.
Somehow that's a factor.
Kind of like on eBay where when there's 30 seconds left, all the bids flying.
So.
So the clock restarts then if, if, when somebody re-
There has to be a mechanism built into the process that allows what the statute requires. And that is, the higher increased bid does not become effective until it's been communicated to any prior bidders.
Ah.
The prior bidders then have the opportunity to raise their bid.
So this could go on a while if it's, you know.
If we do it that way, but couldn't, don't we have the option? No, just-
I just thought, the statute says we have to do it this way.
Well, how do we, how do we do our deed sales? What's the difference? I, I'm not following the difference between that and this.
Well, it's similar statute. It's a similar statute.
And this, and this process doesn't necessarily have to be, we just have to be taking these from the deed sales.
The reason we do our deed sales, and you look in your resolution, you reserve the right to use an auctioneer. Effectively, our deed sales are auction sales.
Correct.
Yeah.
But to his question, this process could be used if we wanted to sell that parcel out on Fairgrounds.
It was used when we wanted to move the one down on, on-
But I guess my question is, is it not an option to say, come to this room on this day? And we'll, we'll have an auction for, for this parcel?
I think it is. If you, but the statute talks about retaining an auctioneer, doesn't talk about the owner being the auctioneer.
Oh, I thought you said you could retain an auctioneer, but you didn't have to.
You don't think that the disposing agent, which they define, could do it themselves?
It doesn't say it. I think the whole intent of, if you look at the minimum statute since this was done in 2015, ten years ago. They tried to, I think, eliminate some of the impediments, so I think, yeah, I think they would honor that. And then you got to have the- Have a public hearing. To prove. Actually, and theoretically, you could have the public hearing before you engage in this. But I think it's, I always thought it was a little bit anal to try to have a public hearing on whether the public wants you to go ahead and dispose of the property. When you don't know what you're going to be disposing of it, for whatever price it is, you know. And once you've completed the process, you know how much the property is going to bring. Have your public hearing, and then you're free to either accept it or reject the process and keep on maintaining ownership.
Okay, so are we ready to? Doesn't seem like we're ready to approve this resolution yet. We don't know for certain that we have the deed in hand. What we do?
I mean, I can, I'm fairly confident you do, because I verified with Selena. I can, I'll check that. Because that was the whole point, you know, we thought we had a time issue. And I contacted the SRIs and counsel, and he said, well, this should have all been done. And he said, you know, we're showing that it was done.
Showed yet.
It was on the, the parcels were included in the tax sale certificates, and they were part of the petition to the court to get a tax deed issued.
Yeah.
And he says, we have no reason to, he did an issue, I confirmed with Selena, she's holding it.
Okay.
Because I think we kind of put her on hold.
Yeah.
Because I think if you looked, I've got another question, we'll talk about it in a minute. But I, I originally prepared this resolution authorizing the sale of eight or nine properties.
Right.
April.
Yeah.
Sure. So kind of in the holding pattern, since now we're ready to go and to the city. But I thought there was a third, there's-
They got three other properties to talk about, this apartment.
Well, that's, I don't want to get this confused. So I think, yeah, you're ready for that resolution. The timeline, I think, is just something that'll be developed as time goes by. My advice is that we don't even attempt it. Have a public hearing that the statute requires until, at least if we receive the appraisals, instead of a bid. And if you want to compress it on the far end, you can go ahead and do the public. I'd rather wait. So I'm dealing with a lot of competitive bidding. See, I gave them 48 hours, because we were dealing with some pretty big numbers. This ended up, the example that I gave you in the materials, ended up topping out at a million dollar sale price. On an appraisal that was probably $70,000. So, yeah, we'll figure.
So are we ready to proceed with resolution 2025-007?
I am, and I'll make the motion that we approve resolution 2025-007.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. How many copies do you want of this?
And I've got the, the here and the-
Sign this one to get this done, okay?
So this will be interesting.
It's not quite the way we normally handle deed sale properties. If you look at the property card, you'll see that each parcel has a special assessment of $489,000 against it.
Yes, because of the cost of demolition.
Does it need a grant to do that? Do you know?
I don't know.
Pardon me, assignments.
Okay. So what about an appraisal, get it solved back then? One appraiser and one internal person or do you want two appraisers?
If the statute allows for an internal, like Tim or somebody-
Be ready.
The statute allows two. And the statute doesn't, well, it does. It's just you got to really read it close. It's not a joint appraisal, because it says, then the commissioners will consider the appraisals, plurals. So your point two, it suggests that there's two independent appraisals. Which, under the old statute, then you typically average them. And that, that's not in there anymore.
I think, I think Tim right here would be a good option.
I agree.
I think one by them. I just, my rationale for using a certified appraiser is that it's an independent transparency that we're not using two of our own people.
Yeah, absolutely. And I mean, you know, it's not just-
It's an independent third party.
You're sending your money in to get the admissions, but after your name, you got to do a little qualification.
Yeah. Sure. So I'm fine with one of them being internal. So I'm fine with one of them being internal person that's qualified, like Tim or Gary, and then, then a certified, uh, appraiser, agree.
That's how we proceed, will you get?
That person, or who do you want, do you wanna solicit that?
I would suggest either Matt or, or Mike.
Okay.
Mike Lyons or Matt Nipoti.
Again, Steve, you'll follow up.
Who do you want to take care? Sorry, you want to see?
Gary or?
No, I think.
Gary or, or Tim. Gary Callahan or Tim.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay. All right, what else?
Uh, I was going, in fact, I was trying to update the, uh, maybe Steve can jump in here, too. Update the resolution that we.
I gave you in April, uh, for the, at that point, nine properties that we wanted to convey to the city. So, uh, I've got the letter from the city dated June nine that approved, they acknowledged their willingness to take title two oh four South thirteenth, four forty-one South eleven. Uh, I thought there was a third.
We have an updated letter that includes a third property.
Okay.
And that.
Fifty-one South fifteenth.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one South fifteenth, okay. Now, just. Now, are there others in addition?
That's the only three that are on our conversation.
Correct, the city.
Okay, that's fine, then, uh, I'll get this cleaned up, uh, and back to you. Do it next week.
Next week. Good.
Got, we need some new on the deal tax, I think. Legal published, the public hearing, I co-published later for the second, I did it separately, and, uh, there's supposed to change, I guess, the ordinance, the prototype ordinance we prepared for maximum amounts, being what is advertised and is the council can.
Change that to.
Change that, can't go over it, but they can, they can dig a list or something, so. And I think that's basically it.
I have a question for you when you're done.
I think he's done.
Okay, so how, I, I was approached by the sheriff on, apparently they have a, we have an ordinance with them for their federal grant that they use for, um, traffic control, it's a, and it's a set of wage and what they pay, I think right now it's time and a half on it.
I have no idea.
He said, he wants to amend that, so I don't know how we do that.
Well, if we do it, I, I, I.
Or is it a new resolution, new ordinance?
I don't think we pull it out of the, out of the air, I mean, so I, I'm assuming any ordinance we do is gonna be predicated upon criteria that are in place for, by the overarching authority that is sourcing them.
Bobby couldn't find any reference to a, to an ordinance that had been adopted that set the, uh, the pay rate.
Revealing wage for that project.
And so.
Cause he seems to think there is, and I'm like.
We're talking about for the, uh, special traffic control.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Grant, the grants from.
Seasonal.
Yeah, they, they get funds from the, the federal government to do OWI seatbelts, yeah.
Kind of thing, those, those projects, uh, and I think.
So obviously, there's a source, external source of funds, that's the key point. What are, if any, are the restrictions on, that come with those funds, because.
I asked him to get us a copy of whatever grant he was.
Yeah, I think that's the starting point, cause I mean, I, I don't know.
Yeah, and this is one that they've had for.
Yeah, we knew it.
Years and years and years, so, but he seems to think there was an ordinance that stated that it was time and a half, which comes out of the ordn-, uh, comes out of the funds, it doesn't cost the county anything.
Costs anything, so, I mean, I think.
Well, the, and the question, I think, is if they, if, if that, if those hours add to the hours that they work for the county on their regular duty, does that trigger any of their regular duty time being time and a half overtime?
I mean, it's, it's hours work.
And it's all.
All we're doing is taking money from an external source to, I mean, I, um, you correct me, you know more about than I do. I don't think we're hiring anybody, no, we're just taking our staff.
And it pays the fringes.
Or, uh, hours assigned during this period of vigilance and taking.
So let's say they come in on their day off, they're saying, I'm, I'm gonna work project between four PM and eight PM on their day off, then that's four hours that they get paid.
At, at an overtime rate.
In the, as overtime, time and a half or double time, whatever that's set like this.
Cause the way.
And then it includes all fringes, too, out of the grant.
Okay.
And, and it does that, and it, that's why it's not a specific ordinance, because in the grant application, that's what they spell out, that this will be at time and a half in the grant application, and then these were typically given to the officers to do on their off-duty time, so when they did it on their off-duty time, it was in addition to regular time, so it automatically triggered that time and a half, because they wouldn't exceeded their, uh, what, hundred sixty hours in a twenty.
Yeah, theirs is a different computation.
It's a hundred sixty hours in a twenty, or I think, or no, a hundred seventy-one hours in a twenty-eight day period. So then, because they do it on their off-duty time, it's in addition to those regular duty times, and then that's what triggers the time and a half.
So that's what the grant is intended to do.
In the grant.
Right.
Is set up to pay that time and a half.
And, and that time and a half is dictated by federal statute.
No.
No?
If they can pay, cause the reason, the reason why he's wanting to increase it, because there's other agencies within the, the, um, county that are paying a higher rate
From that grant?
From that grant, so.
So that might be what requires the ordinance if you pay more than time and a half.
Well, I'm saying, like Milton right now is paying their people's.
But that's a minimum.
It's the Fair Labor Standards Act, right, and that dictates time and a half for.
But it always sets a minimum, not a maximum.
Right.
Sure.
So, and, and it's.
So how do you set something higher than the minimum then?
Well, that's why he's saying he thinks there's an ordinance.
That's what he wants to do, he wants to, and he thinks there's an ordinance, so.
If there is, then we can probably do one.
We're saying there's not, and do we need to do an, an ordinance, and.
Saying we do, I don't know.
Well, but we can't find it, so.
Well.
Nobody has.
Can we just do a new one then?
Eric, we do a new one, yeah.
Exactly.
That's what I'm saying.
Cause I think.
But the question is, do we do it or does council do it? Council typically sets the, the pay rate.
I know.
So would, would this be a council ordinance as opposed to something?
I was thinking about that, too, and I tend to think it's probably council.
That's what I think.
And, and it depends on the funding, though, that comes in due for the project, cause every project is funded differently. And, and I'd say differently by, uh, the amount of funding, and so it would be based on the funding of the project as well. Cause some, some of the projects pay a little bit more than, than others do, so, per hour, per officer type, so.
Again, there, there, there are, there are documents somewhere, and those are, those relate to the sources of funding, that's the starting point.
So somewhere there's.
Well.
Yeah, and they said whoever's in charge of that grant at the Sheriff's Department sends a report back to, you know, this is what we're paying, and this is how many hours they've worked, there's a reporting process.
But if, you know, if it's such that they can make more money by being security over at a concert venue in Indianapolis.
Been doing project, and that's what's happening.
And that's, and that's why he wants to, to increase the.
Yeah, and I understand that, so.
So, uh, we just need to figure out how to do that and who needs to.
And I think the starting point is, is there, there has to be some documentation for the grant they're getting.
Yeah.
I can, I, I guess I can ask the sheriff or the major and say.
I asked him yesterday, I met with.
Okay, so you're.
On, on that other issue with the mechanic.
Okay.
And, uh, asked him, cause he then asked me about this ordinance, and I asked him to send us a copy of the, the grant that they're working from, and I, I don't know, maybe the auditor already has a copy of it, but, uh.
I mean.
That.
I would think we'd wanna make sure we kinda correlated our level of service to the monies we're getting from the grant.
Right.
Sure.
And, yeah, I got the impression that we have X amount of dollars.
That's what I was assuming, so.
So at the beginning of the season, whenever they open this grant, say, okay, you have fifty thousand dollars just being on, just, you know, click it or ticket.
And so if we, if we, by increasing the rate of pay, obviously you would reduce the hours you have.
Exactly, but if you have nobody working it.
Nobody, nobody will take the, the assignments because it doesn't pay enough, so.
Cause they can work other details.
Right, right, so, okay.
They walk off.
Who knows the name of the grant?
I don't, I don't know it, Mark, but we, we need to find out, so.
And there would be different ones, because there are different projects. Yeah, it was an OWI project, that's a click it or ticket project, so it was all paid different. I think they're open at the same time, but they're different grants.
Okay.
Cause you have to sign up when it's in the works.
RPD participates in that seatbelt enforcement, don't they?
RPD, Milton, Cambridge City, Centerville now, all are doing these projects.
Okay. Well, we'll continue to work with Randy and get more information and figure out.
I didn't know he talked to you, cause he talked to me about it Monday.
And I guess we have street vehicles that we've seen in the forfeiture, and so if they have questions about what the statute has changed, and what the process is to sell them, and thinking of online auctions, I just got to inquire yesterday from Laura and from the lady who works for her or with her, so I'll have to look at that, I'd go back to statute, sorry.
Okay. All right, what else have you got for us, Ron?
Uh, I guess about it.
All right. Steve? Want to get started?
Okay, so look at your project list, and, uh, yeah. Talk about the NX generator, so.
The project that keeps on going.
So remember that the project is substantially completed, although there's not been a document generated. Say that.
And that document would be generated from DLZ?
It would be generated by, uh, contractor, DLZ then signed off on it, and then comes to use on.
That's a big moth.
That's why I'm like, what's flying around?
So the, the issues at hand, um, remember they were, we have not yet received the owner's documents, manual operating things, warranty, et cetera, et cetera. There was the one item on the punch list that has not been resolved, and then we go back to the item, remember the, and I've talked to engineer from DLZ on this, and he stands by his decision. Remember that the contractor chose to use a portable generator in lieu of the instructions that were spelled out in the bid documents to, uh, transfer switch in a temporary location so that they could run off power generator and never be without power one way or the other. If the contractor, and he did that without a change order, that should have been a change order for him to do that, because then DLZ would have had a chance to review it and say, well, you need to do this for some safeguards.
Cause it was spelled out in, in, in the front-end documents.
Correct.
This would be the mechanism.
Correct.
Normally, we don't get involved in telling the contractor means and methods, but, but this is a security issue.
Well, the, because the end result.
It's what we got.
Had been done as a change order upfront to change the method that was prescribed by the engineer, the engineer would have had a chance to say.
Yes, this work.
Do this, but you need to do this. And that didn't happen.
Make sure that our, our existing backup was functional.
Right. So there's, that's where we are with the project, now the project itself, it's operating as it should, it's testing as it should, and it's actually kicked on a couple of times from power, obviously, we had this work fine. So I wanted you to look at then, uh, the, the numbers, so I've put this sheet here before you. So the contract amount was two forty-nine and two hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars. We have paid to date a hundred fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars. So the contract balance is eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred twenty-seven dollars. Remember, we have, we believe we had a claim of the damages that we had sustained, and then Ron indicated that needs to be at two hundred percent. So the thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-three is the two hundred percent of the amount that we are claiming.
Sure.
Well, the two hundred percent relates to the punch list items, not to.
Okay.
Liquidated damages already incurred.
Yep, you would normally, you would hold back that retainage.
Yeah.
For the, for the punch list.
I think it's at two hundred percent.
Okay.
For the punch, you know.
So it's, so it's the punch list items at two hundred percent, not our.
Okay.
Plus our contractual claim set off that we would take from there.
Okay, so the punch list or the, uh, the retainage in this, so, so to understand this, this will change our numbers here. So the retainage is about twelve thousand dollars, I thought I had that in front of me. So you're saying that that should be twenty-four thousand retainage. The retainage right now is twelve thousand.
Retainage is, is, is a totally different.
I understand.
I mean, it's either five percent for the life of the contractor, ten percent for the first half.
It's five percent for the life of the contractor, and this, so it's. So there's twelve thousand dollars in the retainage, and you're suggesting that needs to be held back at two hundred percent for the punch list.
What, what, what are the estimated values of punch list items?
Well, I don't know yet on that lug change, you need it, we need a specific number for that.
And that's.
Yeah, cause you gotta have those numbers to make sure that your two hundred percent retention is, is enough to cover that, it's from why, why I understand.
You gotta realize that in addition to retainage, we have unpaid pay apps.
Correct.
Right, so then that goes above and beyond, adds up to that two hundred.
I think the unpaid pay apps are where we look to get our actual amount of our damages.
And that's where I'm heading with this number here, so the, in the contracts, the contract balance is eighty-nine, eight twenty-seven. Our claim that, in fairness to the contractor, he hasn't had a chance to contest it or to, you know, see what he wants to do with it, uh, is, uh, about sixteen, sixteen eight, something like that. So to Ron's point, then, this, this number where I say our claim is thirty-three thousand, so that number will change to that sixteen.
Half of this.
Half of that, plus whatever we think is the estimate from the retainage to fix the remaining items.
So why are you halving the, the claim?
Well, he says not to.
It's not two hundred percent.
Was actually, our claim was actually sixteen thousand.
Sixteen, so why wouldn't, so if the retention is twelve thousand, so we double that, two hundred percent is twenty-four thousand.
He said, yeah, not to do that, he said to, the doubling is what we take initially.
The retention is a retention, is a retention, unless there's.
Correct. Is to actually fix what is left on the punch list, doesn't have a thing to do with our claim, because of two different things. So our claim is sixteen thousand.
Our claim is contractual based on, basically breach of contract.
Right.
And we're gonna use, we're gonna assert or write a set off, the monies we owe our contractor, now he may or may not.
Yeah, but he, but he needs a chance to see this.
Exactly, exactly.
So you're saying twelve thousand plus half of the sixteen eight, which is eight four.
Full amount for, for our claim of damages is sixteen eight. And then of that twelve thousand retainage, we need to determine the amount that it would cost to fix what's on the remaining punch list.
Yeah, I assume LWZ's got that.
Yeah, that, that we can, we can get, so that's the number that.
That's the one you double.
Right, so then we add those two together, and that's what we're gonna take.
Okay, and we don't have.
I don't have that.
What that number is.
I, I misunderstood.
But it's essentially the, the issue with the logs.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think it, well, when Steve gets comfortable with the numbers, I think probably then what needs to be, I can prepare a letter, they can go out with your signature.
So these numbers don't.
This is the approach we'll take in handling final payment, but basically, that's what all this revolves around, cause I assume from what I saw in the emails, he's got two pending pay apps and one anticipated final payout.
Yeah, so the one payout we can release, cause it's twenty-two thousand, we know he's gonna get that, and then remember the landscape and wall change, we did approve that.
We approved it, so you can pay that.
Sixty-two seventy-four.
Pay that, too, but.
Agreed.
But it's not part of the contract, because it was done not as a change order, so I'll have him invoice me that.
Okay.
And we'll pay that out of the Q four, that's fine, yeah.
As a separate.
Yeah, as a separate issue, so I'm gonna, gonna pay the sixty-two seventy-four, and then we'll pay it, we'll, we know we're gonna pay that one payout of twenty-two thousand, and then whatever that last payout, after we crunch these numbers that we.
Oh, that is based on top of it, right?
So, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Clear if I'm. This one is D L Z.
D L Z.
Yes, D L Z. But, to, to the point then, I need, we need to send the contractor something to give him a chance to respond to that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna send him an email telling him, here's what we're gonna release. And then we'll, we'll process that. Yeah. So can I, I can send him that, right? Now, uh, you wanna, you're, you wanna put a letter together though?
I think in two aspects, I don't wanna, I wanna make sure we don't inflate them. To me, we believe, we intend to exercise or write a set off for a claim we can put noted, on notice for earlier that now we think we have liquidated at this amount. This is supporting data, please review it, let us know what your position is, because we would intend to withhold that from monies yet to be paid here.
Okay.
And then the punch list is just statutory.
I understand. So I'll, I'll put this together, send it to you, and then you legalize.
Legalize.
Then the funds dies.
Yeah, okay. All on the same page now?
I think so.
It's just not this page.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'll get a new page, yeah, you'll get a new page on that. Okay.
It's on the back side.
Nothing new on those, those center items there. Uh, have received the information, I guess just simply on the fairground parking. You know, I know Brandon has been busy with other things, but at some point we need to.
Correct.
Move that.
So we really need to, if we're gonna move forward with that, we need to get the gravel in place this fall so the paving could have a spring.
So, you might articulate that too.
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak to it.
Uh, because you know how everything else moves slow, you know, that everything subsequent to just getting Brandon's figures will slow as well. Yeah. So the front entrance, uh, you know, you can see for yourself, they've installed the bollards, safety bollards. Uh, I'm not convinced, uh, they're in the right place.
They don't look, doesn't appear to be.
They don't appear to be in the right place. I looked at the plans, it's kind of ambiguous, although the, the actual drawings show them at equal distance apart. So I've sent it, uh, an email to L W C to take a look at it, clarify this for us, because the whole intent is so that you can't drive a car through it. So, uh, and then they have started on the temporary ramp that's to be in place on the north side so that they can redo the south side. Nothing new on the proxy card lock system, haven't gotten any deliveries or anything yet. Uh, and then still on schedule for the courthouse elevator to be have get openings on the thirteenth, longest.
Sorry to interrupt, but you're gonna go through all this at our meeting, starting at nine thirty? So is there something you want to cover that's not part of that meeting?
Yeah, so then on the, the last item there, I've added the courthouse security entrance on the west side as a project. And remember, I've sent that back to L W C for clarification of the figures. I hope we could talk about that today, but we don't have those numbers yet, so that's been sent back. And then Dakota has put in her resignation, uh, from recycling decision.
Right.
In fact, we've got a couple of weeks. I, unless you think otherwise, I don't plan to request to replace that position at this point in time.
We don't have a forum to do it.
Well, we, I think we need to push forward with conversations with, uh, with Richmond Sanitary. They're not about them, uh, hiring a person that we would, we would pay them out of the recycling funds to cover the cost of, of an employee at, uh, the organization.
We probably need to get a really interlocal agreement.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Ninety percent and down.
But in the meantime, she's already started, uh, with setting up a, a paint, uh, recycling in Hagerstown for this fall. So we'll go ahead with that, it's a relatively easy, um, thing to do with, uh, the recycler that's involved in most of the work.
Steve can handle that because he's from Hagerstown.
Exactly, he's right across the street.
Who buried the paint in the body?
I'm not, you said that, I didn't.
Stop it, stop it.
The paint is going to be recycled from your house anyway.
We'll, we'll move forward with, uh, conversations with Richmond Sanitary District Command.
So if we can get right, we got some handouts to this.
Let's take a brief recess and we will reconvene at nine thirty with our, with our elected official department head meeting.
One thing I did send you.
Hey, everybody, if you could take a seat, please. We're gonna read to these. All right. I think we're ready. Do you have to count down fifteen seconds? No, we're good? Okay. They'll get in the hang of this, so. Welcome, everybody. Big crowd today. I don't know if that is any indication of how long this meeting's gonna last, but we might as well go ahead and get started. So I think we're gonna start with Kim. You've got a couple of things to cover. Go right ahead.
I do. So the first on the agenda is the fleet safety policy. And I do have a handout, and if I do not have enough copies, you didn't receive it. This will all be put where I will ask Caleb to get it posted on the portal. So you'll be able to view that, okay? So with that policy, I will be meeting with Verata hopefully this week. And we are gonna supply them with the county email list of all employees. So everybody will be receiving in the future when I give the green light, which you will know when the green light goes on. They'll be sending out an email with the link. And I'm gonna make sure you tell your employees also that it's true. It's not spam. But it'll be a short process that they will need to fill out regarding their driver's license. And I'm still working out with the, with Verata and our office regarding insurance cards. Because again, as a reminder, and it's in the policy, if an employee is driving their personal car with approval from the elected official or from the department head, and they're gonna submit mildly before that's paid, we will be checking the list to make sure we have their personal insurance card on file. That is a requirement. So be on the lookout for that. I look for Verata to take possibly two to three weeks to get all disloaded and ready to go. And then we'll notify. It is coming. But I do have a request. The last time we had such proactive employees, we ended up having employees come to the HR office with copies of the driver's license and insurance card. And we're not taking those at this time. So we will get those coming in because we have to go through this process, the tracking process. With that.
Let me just say.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, okay. So remember, this fleet safety policy is a result of our auto insurance renewal. And this is something that we needed to do to manage our liability with respect to the county vehicles that are driven by our employees and with the personal vehicles that are driven by our employees while on county business. So this is also tied to the travel policy that the department head or elected official, if they want to, needs to approve whether or not you allow that person to use their personal vehicle on county business. If you do approve that, they need to have that insurance card or their personal insurance on file with HR. If they don't have that, we're not gonna pay the travel claim. And that is also tied to the travel policy. In addition to that, to drive a county vehicle, which many of our departments, that's a requirement of the job description. So those employees who are required to drive a county vehicle while on county business must have this driver's license information on file and checked. For elected officials, obviously, we cannot dictate that to you to be a part of that. But you cannot drive a county vehicle unless you have that information on file. So that's what Kim is referring to, and that'll lead forth.
Is there provision in your broad rental vehicles? Or is that included?
There is.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's also tied to the travel policy as well. Okay. Kim?
So in your packet, again, if you don't have it, it'll be on the portal. There's three new updated policies. So I did supply you with a memo. And also attached to that is an acknowledgement. So again, I'm asking for your help because HR's going in all kinds of different directions right now with projects. So I'm gonna ask that each elected official and department head be responsible to make sure all employees within their department signs off on this acknowledgement of the policies. They need to read the policies. And the policies are already on the portal. We had that done yesterday under employee update, handbook updates. So once you, the elected official department head, have a complete packet of all your employees that have signed off on this acknowledgement, then I ask that you turn that into HR. So we're not having individual employees rushing in. So if you would do that for us, it'd be extremely helpful. But the reason we do this, have them sign off. If we get into any type of litigation or even an unemployment claim and it for some reason would involve one of these three policies, first thing they're gonna ask is that the employee, was the employee aware of the policy and how were they informed of it? Well, this acknowledgement will satisfy that question when it's asked. Any questions?
When you sign that, will they first or are you?
Will they? Yes. So this is for the employees you have now. This is, this acknowledgement will be part of our coordination packet, onboarding packet. Any other questions? So the next packet I have for you, and actually, that's gonna be for the. Well, I'm gonna write it with mine. Here it is. Is some examples of employee evaluations, which we encourage you to use this tool for your employees. So the first one is Wayne County Government Employee Self-Evaluation Assessment. I think it's important for the employee to sit down and kinda fill this, not kinda, fill this out and kinda to evaluate what their perception is of their job and how they're performing their job. You would do this first. And then you would like to set up an appointment with the employee and go ahead and use the other. I have two forms, employee and performance evaluation. The first one in your packet's already on the portal. And actually, you can just fill it out online. So that one's available right now. And the second evaluation is not on the portal yet, but it will be. And again, read through these and kinda see what might fit for your situation and for your office. So these are examples for you to use. And, you know, we have new department heads, new elected officials. So I just wanna remind you about our performance evaluation. And it's just to help the employee and you so they can meet their job expectations, complete their goals, and see how they're contributing to the team here in county. So it can be a very useful tool for you and for your employees.
There's a question behind you.
Yeah. So you've given us a couple of examples. Wouldn't we, as an organization, only all wanna use the same one?
I don't find that necessary just because we have so many different departments with different requirements and needs. So it's still evaluating the employee, but one might meet your needs better than the other within your office. So I don't like to dictate something like this. I want it to be designed for your office, your employees, et cetera.
The only reason I bring this up is that I was involved with one where an organization used more than one evaluation process. We got sued because it wasn't.
Well, we're not tying this to pay. So that, that thing's to change. If everything is tied to pay regarding performance, then we wanna be very careful on, you know, raises that are given that are raises. That's not our structure that we use right now. So again, this is a tool that is not tied to salaries.
Do you have extra copies of these packets?
I don't really. I'll get them on the portal today. And there might be some on some chairs over here afterwards. Sorry, I was short. Yes, Matt.
Just for clarification, so if we're already using one, do you want to approve that? Or do you want to see it? Or does the fact that we're doing?
I would like to have a copy from my files.
Okay.
Because I keep it electronically. So I would like to have. If you have your own.
Okay.
Have you been using this? Thank you. My given thirty-second review.
Thank you.
The other thing is, I just found it's, I used to use the 360 model all the time. So we let the employees do an own self-evaluation. We do an evaluation and we sit down and talk about it. But in a 360, I let all the employees evaluate me also. It's done anonymously, but we get a report from each of the employees. So I have a better idea of what your company, what's working, what's not working.
And there is a section on the self-assessment that allows for comments and things like that also for now.
That's also a good thing to have on just you. You use one of these and give it to them, so they evaluate me also.
Any other questions for Kim? Kim, do you have anything else? Steve? Okay, the next three items on your agenda. The first one is the courthouse front instance. You know, we talked about this for a number of months, and it's a project that you get to see every day. And you come to work and you can, you can see the progress or the lack of progress that may be not happening out there. So the current status of that, they continue to move forward really slow. We've had some issues that we've made them correct. One of those will be coming up here in the next week or so. There'll be a new accessible ramp put on the north side of the steps because they've got to redo the permanent ones on the south side. The permanent one on the south side does not meet the criteria that was in the plans. So they've actually started on the north side to do some clearing to put this temporary ramp in. So everybody that works in the courthouse or accesses the courthouse, that'll, your entrance will change to the north side here sometime in the next few weeks. And then that south side ramp will be torn out and done. So that's, that's why you see on that top section that it has not been poured yet. Suppose they've got to redo that southwest corner of that upper part of the landing. So we'll keep moving forward, but just be patient and watch for the entrance changes.
We have plenty of signage out there for regular citizens. We made a horrible mistake, which the sheriff told me immediately.
Sure.
The guy couldn't find how to get into the courthouse. He'd been around three times. So I said, well, come on in this way. Walked him in, took him upstairs. About ten minutes later, Randy calls. Hey, what if I, you know? We let a guy in that bypassed the security check, and we didn't even think about it. So we, many people have stopped and can't figure out how to get in this way.
Okay. We'll try and do a better job on that. And the courthouse elevator, you know, this is a project that we've been talking about for several months. Just due to the age of the current existing elevators in the courthouse that has gone out for bids. Again, recall that we sent this out for bids once before. Didn't get a responsive bid back. So that project has been reevaluated and it has been sent out for bids again. Commissioners will open bids for that project on August thirteenth. So we'll have a picture of what that may look like after that. If this project continues to move forward, which that's our intent, this one will be a noisy one for the courthouse folks because there'll be a lot of demolition inside the courthouse. The criteria and the bid specs calls for most of this to be done after hours or on weekends. But no doubt, there's gonna be a time that we're gonna have some disruptions during the day. It's a pretty big project to get this elevator in an existing shaft that's in a courthouse that was built in the eighteen hundreds. So imagine the obstacles that we'll face for that.
Sheriff Redder has a question or comment?
Steve had a question. If they're gonna be doing some of that demo and construction after hours, I'd like the opportunity to be able to talk with you in the planning phases of that so we can make sure that proper security is being served in place.
And then the item number five on your, your list, and this is one of the policies that Kim spoke of earlier that's also on the portal, the new proxy card policy. Take a look at that as we can. I have sent, recall that I've sent out to all the departments for the department heads to determine which of their employees would need, need access to whatever door. I've got, I've got a pretty good response from most departments. I've got a few still out there. So I'll be sending that email out again, just reminding you that I'll need this information back. This will, this project will come to a close pretty quickly. The proxy card readers themselves has not been, have not been installed since because there's a, there's a component that's on backorder that they don't wanna start installation until they have all the pieces in place. But once this arrives, obviously, we'll have a number of employees that will need to be cards issued to. Courthouse security will do the proxy cards. The identification cards will be done by HR. So we'll need to get that scheduled, so kinda watch for that. But this'll ramp up pretty quickly to get this finished up and to get everybody issued a proxy card. Because we don't wanna be issuing keys. That's the whole intent of this. So watch for these emails.
And Steve, if I could add to that, just remember that once this is, this policy's in place, we're changing the locks, the key locks. So those keys will not work. So it's important that you get your proxy card information to us.
Right, yeah. All the, all the external doors of the health department, this building, the annex will no longer work. Once this is in place, so. And anybody have any questions on those three items? Okay. Any other questions for Steve about facilities or how he keeps his youthful appearance or anything that's on your mind? All right. If not, we will go to Craig. All right.
Morning, everybody. Just wanna glance over really quick the remote management, the remote access policy. This is nothing new. We've been doing it for, for years. It's just we never actually had the policy. So when new people come in, they don't really understand why IT has unattended access at any time to their workstations. And this kind of explains that, you know, for us to do our job, we have to have unattended access to your workstations. This, you know, this is not a tool to spy on you. It's just how we remote into your PC, take care of your issues, fix problems, make sure you have the right security, make sure everything's configured. So no change to your workflows, no change that any of you will see. It's just now it's in policy.
And that policy is also on the portal.
Yes, that policy is also on the portal. Any questions about that? Okay. So going on to the new email. It is, we, the state is mandating that we go to the IN.gov email because we hold elections. That's why I went ahead and sent and had every department head, elected official, and what considered a county VIP have the new email. My department thought that it was easier if we added your email and kept your old email live. I know working out of two emails gets confusing. But you can take your time on your new email. Some of us have had our emails for decades. This gives you a chance to, you know, go through your rules, create only the rules you want, get into your contacts, only put the contacts in that you need, get your calendars together. Because you're going to be, and especially those that work out offsite or after hours, you know, you just basically go in to open up a browser, sign into your Microsoft account, and now you have access to your email, your contacts, and your calendars. So you don't have to install anything. It's just right there. And that is one of the reasons why we've now given you access to your Microsoft account so you can do that. But we can set up forwarding if you want and take your CO.Wayne.IN.us email completely out of the picture. It's still live. It's still being archived. Anything that hits that just goes to that email and comes up into your Wayne County IN.gov email. I found that that was a little bit more confusing than just working out the two email boxes and you can slowly see one email's count going down while the other one goes up. Zebra's gonna be around for, I don't wanna say a year, but probably close to the next year, a good six months. So there's no fear of having to get this new email out, you know, immediately and get all this done. I really want you to take your time and set up your workflows with that new email the best you can because it's probably gonna be the last email you get in a while. It does, it does take time, and we're here for any questions. We are learning too. You know, if you have any questions about, you know, exporting and importing contacts, exporting and importing tools, we are here to help. Please, you know, just contact us and, and we'll get that set up for you. If you know of anyone, everyone will get this. We're just trying to hit the most important people first, especially the people that deal with the state. I do request that any, anything you do with the state that you use your new email, just so they know that we have met that requirement. Most of it is just to make sure Tara's using it the most. But it is confusing. I know it's confusing, but I think in the long run, we have enough time to really get it set up the way we want to. Because the last time we changed, we just changed servers. We didn't change email addresses. So now we actually have completely a different email server, a different email. So if anybody has any questions or problems or knows anyone that should have it immediately, just let it know and we'll get it. We'll get it installed for them.
I don't think I've been transitioned to that email. As I've said, are archived emails gonna transfer over? Are we permanently saving those?
Yeah, so like I said, the Zebra server's gonna be around for well more than a year just in case it'll probably be turned off and then turned on when needed. We will give you access to your archive directly in your email. You, you won't lose anything. Your new email is being archived through the exchange, through e-discovery and all of that. So any new emails already being archived, your old email will still continue to be archived, and you will have access to that whenever you need it. Matthew?
Is the online, or yeah, the online employee directory updated as people are changed? Because I had an issue yesterday where one department sent me an email assuming that I had switched and had not, so I never received it.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that was being updated. And just as a reminder to everybody, don't, don't assume that all department heads have transitioned because we have.
Right. Right. And that's, that's something that, yeah, the, the, the current employee directory is attached to our Zebra server. So anytime we put a new email in there, then it automatically syncs to the LDAP, and that's how you get that, that list. But no, we will start actually putting in the new emails manually for a while.
So we have the generic email, Health@CO.Wayne.IN. When is that transition expected?
As soon as, as we can. We're, right now, does it need to be an alias or a distribution list? So that's kind of what we're trying to figure out on some of these generic emails of how to go about how to create them and which is the best way. So if you have any, you know, hey, I'm, I'm the only one that gets this email, then yes, we can turn that in today. It's just an alias. But if several people are getting this email, then we have to turn it into a distribution list.
Five employees that probably are on the computer more at night than they are during the day with their investigation stuff. So, and they don't always get, read their emails probably as quickly as they should. Can those just be transitioned as a group? So do I, will they know? Will they get an email that says this is your new email address?
Yes, yeah. They, they probably just have not been transferred over yet. And, and again, the old email will still be right inside your Outlook. You'll still be able to access, send, and receive email just like you are now out of that old one. They'll just have a new one on top that they can start to, start to use at, at their convenience. Yeah, we will, we will definitely let, let people know it's, it's happened. Some people we've tried, we haven't been able to catch. And then we're just, we're just kinda going back. We've noticed that some people, especially in the prosecutor's office, that should have had it and didn't, and that caused a little confusion there. So any, any, any person that you think needs one now or would like to have one now, just let us know and, and we'll, we'll add it to their Outlook.
Just for the individuals who possibly send out an email blast, do you wanna go over that? Because I ran into problems with the new cannot send an email with five hundred, more than five hundred.
By, on mass emails, I would say still use the CO.Wayne emails right now. Everybody can still get their emails, whether it's in a small email, a separate email box or being forwarded. So anything that goes to CO.Wayne.IN.us will, will still work. You know, like right now, if you go on and that, you know, all your distribution lists are now wrong and all of that, that'll be updated once everyone gets into the new email. But since not everyone's on the new email, it just, it, I would just go ahead and mass email through the old emails. Clear as mud.
I get it. I get it. As you said.
Any other questions for Craig? Any other questions for Craig?
If you do have any questions that pop up or anything, please, just, just give the office a call and we'll, we'll take care of it. But please be patient with us as well, because like I said, this is, this is something new to us. You know, we don't have all the answers yet, but we, we soon will, so.
Thanks, Craig. All right, let's, more people here than typically at our meetings, so I'm not going to call on each of you individually and put you on the spot. But we'll kind of go around the room, if you've got something you'd like to share, feel free to do that as we get around to you. So let's start over here with Max. We'll go around the, the back of the room and then we'll come up to the table. So Max, anything you want to share?
I'd rather not, but I will. Obviously, the big thing that's going on right now is the budget. Appreciate everybody that came in on the 16th and met with us, a couple had to do it previous because they couldn't be there. We've really not gone into the depths of that and working on that very deep yet. We will be, as a finance committee, meeting at each of our upcoming meetings. If we have to have a special meeting, we will, but we're trying to get this taken care of at our meetings. If you have any thoughts, any additional ideas, changes, let us know. With us today, actually, we've got four other county council people here. There's Gus Kappa, Barry Ritter, Beth Leisure, Kathy Williams. Anyway, we will be getting into that. Unfortunately, we still don't know where we're at from how much revenue we're going to have. DLGF's still working on trying to figure out the legislation that was passed and establish the policies and how that's going to all happen. We're confident that we're going to have less revenue, we just don't know yet exactly how much. We soon should get an estimate on income tax revenue, but a final number on that won't happen for a while either, so. We've got a lot of unknowns. The state has changed a lot of things, as you're well aware, you've heard a lot of publicity. The local income taxes that currently are in place go away in a couple of years. There's multiple LITs, local income taxes, that they've made available that can be implemented. We're not, at this time, seriously looking at changing any of the income tax, adding income tax. We will have to do that in another year or two. The one thing that we are looking at, which the state has kind of forced upon us, is the wheel tax. The wheel tax, it's two different categories. There's the surtax on excise, which is for cars and smaller vehicles, smaller pickups, small vans, things like that. The wheel tax is on larger vehicles, semis, trucks, trailers, RVs, that type thing. There's two different ways to figure the excise surtax. One is a flat fee, one is a percentage of the excise tax that you currently pay. We really are kind of looking at this percentage of the current excise tax that you pay when you purchase your license plate every year. And one of the reasons we're looking at that is if you have an older vehicle, if you have a vehicle that's not as expensive, your excise tax is less. And so for lower income people, people who are really struggling, if we went that route, the tax, extra tax on the vehicle would be less. We've made no decisions, obviously. We are going to have an official hearing, the state requires us to have up to two hearings at our next meeting in early August. Will be the first hearing. If we take a vote and it's not unanimous, then there'll be a second hearing, which will happen at a workshop in August. To have a wheel tax that has to be, to collect money starting next year, has to be done by the end of August. Unfortunately, that's kind of a rushed timeline, but that's what we're looking at. Now, the main reason we're looking at that is that the state has changed the way that they hand out community crossings money for highways, to be used on the highways and the bridges. Currently, the community crossings program is a competitive thing. You apply for twice in a year, they award money, and we've received money from that for quite some time. Going forward, they're limiting that pot of money, and they're putting the biggest amount of community crossing money into a fund that is distributed by lane miles. We're kind of fortunate that they have chosen to do lane miles, because most counties have more lane miles than cities. So we would get money out of that large pot of 200 or plus million dollars automatically, no application or anything, it's not competitive. However, you cannot get any of that money if you do not have a wheel tax. The state's philosophy for many years, and they've really emphasized it now, is that they want local government to utilize the tools they've put in place to get additional money. This is one of those, the wheel tax. So not only would we get some additional money for highways and bridges by the wheel tax as such, but we would gain considerable funds out of that. Community crossings, it's automatically distributed yearly based on lane miles. Lane miles are, like if you've got a normal two-lane road, that's two miles per mile, lane miles. Cities, if they've got a three or four-lane road, that adds up. But still, in most places, in most examples, the counties have far more lane miles than cities have, so that would be extra money. So we're looking at that only because the state's really forced us to do that. We will be making the decision prior to the end of August whether we're not, whether or not we'll have that. If we don't do it this year, we may look at it in the future, but we seriously are looking at that right now. As I said, on the local income taxes, there's multiple taxes that's available, but we seriously probably will not look at doing anything on those, at least for another year. See what happens on the property tax revenue and other issues that will affect us. August the 7th, we are, there will be a meeting of all local government units, including libraries in the county. This is a meeting being sponsored by the Chamber, we get the Fairgrounds, Coleman Building, and you're welcome to come. There will be representatives there from AIC, Association of Counties, from the Cities Association, the third group is-
Commissioners Association.
Commissioners Association, and Farm Bureau will have representatives there that have studied all these changes and will be talking about it. Particularly for local, the cities, libraries, townships that may not have the resources to learn as much about this. We'll all be meeting together, that meeting will also be recorded, for those that couldn't attend, see that. If you would like to attend and learn more about that, it's 6:30 on August the 7th at the Fairgrounds. Want to remind, each officer department has a liaison from council that's to work with you. If you've got questions or issues, it would be good to work with your liaison before coming to us to help get your message across, get your questions answered and so forth. So utilize that resource if possible. Do I miss anything important, guys?
I have one thing to add about the bill tax. Part of the reason that we need the extra money is because all of our things in the future are going to fall way short from the projected amount like this year already.
We have one of the better highway systems in the state of Indiana for every. Problem is, revenue has been, not been increasing near at the rate of expenses. Inflation has hit the highway maintenance and bridge maintenance really hard, worse than most things that you encounter on a daily basis. And if we don't find a way to get more revenue for our highway department, we're not going to be able to maintain the quality of the roads that we have today and the bridges that we have today. Once we get behind, we'll probably never catch up. If you want to see what can happen if you don't keep up on your highway maintenance, drive west a little bit, drive south, drive north. The odd thing about all that is, all those counties around us have had a wheel tax for years, they still don't have good news. We haven't had a wheel tax up until now. We've got a good highway system, but we really don't think we'll be able to maintain that if we don't have additional revenue.
One thing I might add, and Brandon can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe Wayne County has the sixth most bridges in the state. So when you think about that, that's the other part of why we're doing this, we have so many to maintain. And, and one, one other thing is, just imagine this, if you happen to cross a bridge going to work every day, what if we didn't have the money to repair it? And you had to drive 10 miles out of route every day just to get to work, just like when the Chester Boulevard Bridge was closed, that was a nightmare. So if we don't have the funds to fix the bridges when they need it, that's going to be the recourse, or could be.
Increase costs, just as example of problems dealing with bridges. Typically, on larger bridges that are federally, we get federal dollars to do those, that's 80% of the cost. It takes about five plus or minus years, and you start a project on a bridge till it's let out for bid. The 80% that the state, which is federal dollars they get, is determined by the estimate at the time you start that project. The bridges we're doing right now started well before the inflation period that we went through. So the bridges that are coming up for bid now is a shortfall. And on some examples of over a million dollars a bridge that we will not get, that normally we would have had from the state matching money. Thus far, we've been able to find the money to continue to, to accept the bids, improve the bridges, but we're coming up on a time when we won't have that availability. Anyway, what I'm saying is, we're in trouble. We've got another bridge that's going to be out for bid in October. The gap between what we will get from the state and our money is about 1.2 million dollars. We don't have that in the bridge fund today. We're going to do everything we can to find that money so we can get that bridge replaced. Other counties are having the same problem, some are not carrying through with projects, they're canceling them. We don't want to do that, because as I said, we get behind, however we ever catch up. So that's just an example of part of our problem and why we're looking for more revenue for bridges and highway. Any questions?
Thanks, sir. Thanks, Max. Debbie, let's go on around the back.
I just want to reiterate, everybody needs to sign up for Property Watch on Doc Pop. Make sure all your real estate that you own is registered under there, you'll get an immediate alert if anything gets recorded in our office that you didn't do. Property fraud is on the rise, and we want to make sure our citizens are protected. So any of your family, you can do it for your parents or, you know, loved ones, but get that done.
Thank you.
It does work, I've had an alert over a holiday weekend, it's not fun. Thankfully, it was just my neighbor messing with the, the boundaries, but, uh, yeah, it does, it does work. I, I don't have anything other than, you know, please, there's, there's going to be changes, we've got some new software coming. Just please be patient with us. If you guys have any questions or anything about anything new that's happening, we'll try to keep you guys in the loop as much as we can. I would like to get some phishing tests going out, everybody loves all that. I'm, I'm not sure though, because now we're in a rich place with two emails. So I don't know, I'm going to have to brainstorm that a little more. But, uh, just, if you have any, any questions or problem at all, just please give the office a call.
All right, thank you. Tim?
Nothing outstanding.
All right.
I don't have anything today.
Skip over here, go back to Dale, anything? All right, down the front row? Anybody? Back row? Here on this side?
Just a couple of things with the Health Department, is there's an employee blood drive on July 31st from 9:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. The flyer is on the portal, it's posted on June 4th, if you want to go back and look at that and participate. Also, we've updated the website, it has both the food inspections on it, so if you go to a restaurant, you can now go onto our website, click that link, and you can go to the most current inspection, you can read that before you go out to eat. So by the first, they're supposed to have every establishment at least one inspection on there, so we're slowly building that database, so everything is not on there quite yet, but it's, it's being built. And we've also included a link to the FDA for all recalls, that's food, drugs, equipment, things like that, plus by shop.
Thank you. Chair? Carol?
Thank you.
Nothing here. So I have, just, I'll go quickly, it's like, our numbers from April to June. We've seen 253 veterans in office, veterans or family members. We have filed 103 claims, and that includes compensation, burial, any of those kind of things. We've had 10 out of office meetings, veterans' meetings. We have filed 67 powers of attorney, so that allows us to represent the veterans in their claims. We've had nine home visits, 39 intent files, so that's 39 veterans who are going to file a claim sometime in the next year. We have fielded about 350 phone calls. Our outreach has been, you know, I'm part of the Tri-County Suicide Prevention Coalition, and we're in another phase of that. To kind of narrow things down about how we're going to, we're not just going to be an informational coalition, it'll be more action-based. With a lot of, a lot more opportunities for outreach. And then we did have a veteran whose claim had been processing for about two years and couldn't figure out what was going on. I was able to make some inquiries, it got finalized after two years, and the retro payment on that was about $40,000. So life changer for that veteran. And we've had another one recently, retro payment was about $27,000. And so I've got a new way that I can start tracking those, rather than waiting for the VA to do the GDX and break that out. Because while it is nice to have the county numbers, you know, on the GDX, this will allow us to break those out by retro payments, increases in veterans' benefits. And we can, you know, do it by veteran or office in total, so I'm working on that. I don't know that I'll go back and look from the beginning of the year and fill all those in, because we have about 1,600 veterans in our system. So we'll have to see, I may just do that going forward. We do have access to a QR code, I was hoping to have it already in place. At our training in Indianapolis, they did say that all the counties' QR codes were ready. I've asked for it, but it's not been sent yet. So as soon as we have that, I'll have IT added to our page on the county website. And I don't know, we'll have to figure out later, we'll just have it posted different places. So that, and we'll go around town, put it in employers, whatever bulletin boards we can put stuff on. And with that QR code, it will help hopefully drive more veterans. And with that QR code, it will help hopefully drive more veterans through the office, but it also allows us to put events on, and then anybody who has access to that QR code will then get notified of those events. And so hopefully we'll have more interaction with the veteran community that way. We still have, and it's funny, I don't remember if I said earlier, we got a big injection of funds from the VFW of about $6,000. And then Cronin is a steady, every month supporter. And so we're sitting at about $6,800 available in the emergency fund. And there were not any parameters set on accessing that previously, and there were a handful of veterans who seemed to kind of be taking, being taken advantage of that So we have changed it where the limit is going to be $1,000. And if they access all of that at one time, then that's their one-time access to that. If it's a small amount, then potentially they could come back and use it again. But they do have to apply every time. They have to explain what they need it for, if it's for utilities or rent that's in arrears, then they have to explain how they got behind and how they're going to prevent it in the future, so that we're not just throwing good money after bat. And we've got some additional resources that we're able to offer them, so that we're not taking the big chunk. We've got HUDVash, we've got Tunnels to Towers, we've got some other stuff. Or if they can cover the big part of the money, we can help with the little parts. So that's kind of how we're running that now. Then the last thing I have is, I'm out of the office, July 31st, August 9th.
I have a quick question. Is your office able, sometimes more than lately, a decedent that we don't have any family, we're not sure, is there a way that your office can help us identify whether this decedent might be a veteran?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, if you have questions, please call us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brandon?
I have one quick change order request for you. Actually, does that have any costs? So that's a good thing.
A reduction in cost. Since I see enough.
So this is for our recently completed bridge, the Heinecker Bridge, the pile driving operations. They didn't have to drive the piles as far as the engineer's estimate, so there's less material in the ground, so there's a reduction of $20,369.80. And I would request approval on the change.
What do you think, Max? Should we approve that?
I think we did.
Okay.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the change order. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So same sign. Motion carries. All right. That's all you have? Mike?
No reductions.
No reductions. Work a little harder on that, will you? Good team?
No.
Mark? Can I get back to the evaluations just one second? I gave you two methods. I believe in evaluations, and I do them currently. But I gave you two methods whereby companies do evaluations. My only thing is, if I do an evaluation of my staff, and I do it differently than the treasurer does her office staff or the reporter does hers, then there's no comparison between the two as the value of that evaluation. So if you want these turned into you, what are you going to do with them?
I'm going to put them in the file, their personnel file. Then that is also a tool for HR. If that employee moves to disciplinary action, we can go back and see what's going on with their performance through these performance evaluations and make sure we're set up and doing the right thing if you do go into advanced progressive discipline on that person. And again, that can be used if we're going to be challenged on a termination or some other issue.
Well, if I kept the evaluation in my office, could I not have then do the same thing? Use that evaluation?
As you move through for progressive discipline, typically when you get into advanced progressive discipline, you should be contacting HR. Just so we can make sure we're in line, and if it's very advanced, it goes to run also for you.
Would you initiate any discipline against an employee?
Would I?
With HR?
No, I would be communicating to the elected official of the department head. I'm not by that employee all day long, so I don't know what's going on. I rely on the elected official and department head. This is a great way to document positive, negative, and how to, and it's also a coaching tool for the employee. But we would look at all of that before we would end up in a suspension or a termination.
I still, I still think there has to be some training that goes out to whoever's going to do the evaluations, so we all do them the same. And I think there ought to be conformity between the offices as to what, how to do the evaluation and what to expect. And I also think the employee should, part of an evaluation is to improve relationships between the employee and the employer, and I think that it's important for the employee to be allowed to criticize the employer also.
There is a comment section at the bottom on the self-assessment for any type of comments. They can write down whatever they want. There's this section. And I appreciate your comments. Everything we do can always have room for improvement, and here's our start for it. This really hasn't been rolled out in detail probably since 2016, when we actually had the consultant, Carol Pappi, come in. And then that was to be tied to salaries, and there's not a good history of that happening fairly to employees.
Is this going to be tied to salaries?
It is not.
It's not?
No. We have our classification point factor system through, and until I'm informed differently from counsel, we will continue with that. So this is not. And if it were tied to, I'm sorry, but if it were tied to salaries, I mean, I've worked for private also. You know, there's software out there that would be used that is uniform, that's a purchase, that's a cost. But I would recommend that if we were tying it to salary, but we're not, and that doesn't, we're not doing that in the future. So kind of this way, unless something changes to help protect the county.
Okay. Thank you. Ron, do you have anything to share?
No.
Brad? All right. Anything else from anybody? If not, we will take a brief recess so that we can kind of get reorganized here. Thank you for coming this morning. We appreciate it. Don't hesitate to ask if you have questions or concerns.
Okay, we are back in session and we're gonna start with Matthew Kane.
So I have a couple of things to bring before you today, the first being to ask commissioners to approve the Wayne County Hazardous Materials Plan. This is an annual requirement by state statute to update. This hazardous material plan relates directly to those facilities that have to report to the state once they hit a certain threshold of having specific chemicals. And they have to report those to the state, part of the SARA Title II funding that then our agency receives back to be put back into the community for first responder training and supporting our industries that have those chemicals. So that plan is reviewed annually and it has to be approved by commissioners annually. This was taken before our local Emergency Planning Committee, L E P C, a couple of weeks ago and was approved by that body and recommended for approval of commissioners. The basic plan has very few updates this year, just to call out a few of them. We updated the capability of rehealth decontamination capabilities. We added a few federal partnerships that we learned that were very valuable during the industrial fire that we had and updated some verbiage referring to social media outlets and how we would notify public and things like that. We had mentioned some specific social media apps and we dialed it back and just give the broad description of social media to cover everything. Other than that, the only things that changed were the actual facilities themselves, the quantity that they may or may not have on hand, and their response plans are all updated every year.
Okay. Aaron, you're the chair of that.
Yep.
What do you have to add?
Like Matthew said, we talked about it in the L E P C meeting back a couple of weeks ago and Matthew sent us all a copy of the plan on the 15th of July. He emailed us that copy to review and like Matthew said, he basically cleaned up some verbiage that hadn't been cleaned up in a while and we, as L E P C group, all, we all agreed with the changes and it's just updating it more than anything. It's not really changing the body of it by any means. And, but I would make a motion to go ahead and approve that based on the L E P C's committee recommendation to do so.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the second thing to bring before you this morning, real quickly, is a quote that we received from emergency radio services and related to the overall radio infrastructure project that we're working through. I have Barry Ritter with us this morning with Ritter Strategic Services to kind of help maybe go over some of this. This quote is specifically for a associated need that we anticipated would happen and that is moving our current resources that we have at the county highway garage and relocating a radio from one of our current remote sites, either in Hagerstown and/or RPNL facility in Richmond, to this new tower and shelter being built at the county highway. Moving that equipment, reusing some of what we already have, but it also requires new coax cable, new antenna, and running some connectivity out to that shelter. Do you have any you'd like to add?
I think, I think you did quite well.
Okay.
This is work that we had anticipated that we've talked about for months that would be outside of the scope of the overall radio project that Motor World is doing. And this is, the equipment is included in the lease that you signed with the tower companies that the county will be paying lease for. Some cost savings in that Matthew has agreed to repurpose some equipment that is only a couple of years old to improve the communications for county highway. So instead of the highway department needing to invest money in a radio system, we're able to help facilitate that and then move their antenna to a higher location on this tower. It'll improve Mike's group's communications in northern part of the county. By doing that, then we will be able, at some point, the county will be able to dismantle the existing tower, the county highway that's beyond into life and not have anything on that structure. This $72,000 quote that's before you from E R S is one of the projects that I've talked to council about at length over the last several months and identifying potential funds to pay for this. And I spoke with Jeff briefly yesterday that it would be our recommendation, my recommendation to you to take to council that this be paid for out of that combined funding that all 10 agree to spend on as part of that ARPA project. So we'd ask for your approval of this scope of work and move to council.
Is this gonna create an additional cost on an annual basis for that tower space or is that all incorporated into our contract for that?
It's incorporated into the current contract.
Okay, okay. I see no reason to not proceed and make a recommendation to council that we're okay with the money coming from that joint.
This is not ARPA money per se. This is the money, the general fund money that was diverted to be for expenses paid by ARPA that would basically then be appropriated or applied by agreement of commissioners and council.
Exactly.
Okay.
Look, that's a motion, Jeff. I'll second that.
That's a motion.
There you go.
And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to recommend to council that the funding for this project comes from the, I'll call it our joint account, lack of a better term, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side, motion carries. So we'll take that to council at their next meeting.
Does that motion also approve purchase of this equipment?
No, does not. Has it gone through the necessary purchase process? Steve?
So is this quote include this equipment? Or is this, is this quote just for?
Well, it's for relocation.
Mostly the installation, right?
Changing of location.
It's installation and new antenna and coax and repurposing of the recent equipment that Matthew is, who is on.
Already exists. And so what is the materials or the new equipment that we're buying? Is that a small percentage of the 70-some thousand dollars or is it mainly the installation? Can you identify the, you said an antenna and something else?
Yeah, there's, on page nine, there's a entire list, most of which, I'm not gonna lie to you, I don't know what it is. But I do know that there at the top is the actual antenna itself. You've got a lot of connections and connectors as part of that. I think the biggest thing would be the extension of the fiber out there to the shelter. But the vast majority, I would think, would be the actual installation part. We're not buying any new radios. We're using the ones we already have, just being repurposed.
So is it essentially that service contract?
I believe it's essentially a service contract with that which is being purchased primarily, that which is required to affect the service, whether it's the conduit, coax, what have you. That's what I was trying to sort out and I couldn't really get a handle on it either.
And so it's not, we don't have to get a specific number?
Yeah, if, if it's potentially a service contract that you can do this without.
And this is the, this is the group that's handling the tower contract for us?
I've had a maintenance agreement with E R S for all my other equipment for the 20 plus years, so.
Well, with that understanding, I think we're good to, for a motion to approve the contract. It's, is this, is this contract in a form that?
I think it's just a quote. It's gonna be like an invoice.
Okay, so the purchase will approve the purchase of this work.
You need a motion?
I think we need a motion.
But our contract was subject to council.
Subject to council.
Well, the first motion is, is the funding to recommend to council and so this requires subject to council's approval of our funding.
Yeah, providing.
Suggestion, correct.
I'll make a motion to, for the approval of the purchase.
Subject to.
Subject to council funding.
Purchase of services.
All right. So Bobby, did you get that? We have a motion and a second, which should satisfy everything we need to do with this particular item. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Not done. I forgot.
There you are.
I forgot yesterday that I need to ask, and I think this follows the same, the same route for commissioners to take to council, the request to restore contingency line item in this, in this project. If you recall, when we were, at the end of the calendar year, we took almost $100,000 out of the contingency line item because it was ARPA money and that money had to be dedicated to a project, so we couldn't carry a contingency. There was an agreement with, between commissioners and council that at the appropriate time we would restore some of that contingency for this project for it to be paid from somewhere. And that somewhere could be the same, agreeable on money in the general fund or council one time or contingency, whatever is agreeable between commissioners and council. So that, there was over, just shy of $100,000 cut out of that contingency. I'd like to restore 50,000 of that in that line item. The tower, county highway's being built, should be done by the end of the week and we'll be able to move forward with concrete installation, which will have to be paid for, which then leads to building generator and alternative fuel sources being set. There's gonna be expenses for concrete that the county's gonna have to pay. And I anticipate that while Mike and Brandon has told me concrete is expensive as we talked about bridges, that we should be able to pay for that out of that line item as necessary.
A $50,000 line item?
It would be my hope. I haven't poured in concrete lately, so.
I just paid a bill. It's expensive.
So.
They have more coming this week, so.
You can either do that or as those invoices come in, decide how we want to pay.
Could this wait till workshop and we just do it all at once?
Why don't we? Or bring it to council on the 6th and then if they approve it, we can look at it in the afternoon.
That'd be good.
On the 6th.
And I'm sorry, sorry to catch your name over here with.
I'm Matthew. Thank you.
Anything else?
Nothing.
I think that's enough. Random house done.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yes.
All right. Thanks, guys. Randy Ritter is next on the hit parade. I know, you have to sit next to Barry. I'm sorry.
Barry's neat. He's all good.
Did you hear what he just said about you, Barry? He said, "Good, you're leaving."
No, no, no. I said, "Good, be good." He's giving more space to Randy.
So I've got a couple of requests for the donation of equipment. The first is several years ago, the sheriff's office transitioned to 800 megahertz radios. We've since upgraded them to new radios and we believe that reliability of that radio system is sufficient and we are not concerned about using the old VHS, VHF radios anymore. In fact, we don't install emanated cars and their, the portable radios are no longer used in any, in any fashion. So we've got a number of those VHF radios in stock at the sheriff's office. They're, frankly, they're in very used condition. They were very well loved, but they were very well used as well. And I've got a current request. I don't have the official request yet. The chief is working on it, but a request from the Cambridge City Fire Department to acquire a number of those radios to use for their uses. They would reprogram them to include their fire channels and so on. In fact, I think they told me that they got somewhere between eight, seven or eight of their staff who do not currently have radios. None of those radios would have any of the current frequencies that we're using or they would be capable of transmitting. It would be inappropriate. So what I wanted to do was, was get your sense, get the commissioner's senses of whether or not this is something that's a possibility. And then what I would do in turn would be come back to you with the exact accounting of which radios would be transferred to them, including make model serial number, et cetera.
So I think I hear you saying that you have no use for any of those radios.
That's correct.
So is that something that is still common with the fire departments to use? And if you've got more than Cambridge City ones, should we reach out to, to the others? fire departments to see if, if they want any more? How many do you have? How many they want?
Yeah, it's possible. My concern is without having the opportunity to actually go in and take a look at them. As I said, they were well loved. So my thought is that we would actually have to cannibalize some to make others work properly and bring them up to an actual usable condition.
And when you say we would have to, are you suggesting that, that we go to the expense of making them usable before we transfer them?
My recommendation.
Transfer multiple ones and say, you know, put together as many good ones as you can.
That would be my preference.
My question is, with this new radio program, aren't we switching everything off of VHS to eight hundred megahertz?
Law enforcement did.
But I thought under this program that we're doing with the antennas, that all the fire departments are going, because we're buying them radios or so many of them and they. So I don't know why they would want them knowing that in six months or.
I think some of the local fire departments love it here.
I have no problem with it. I'm just thinking.
I think they use them on scene to talk.
To each other.
To each other is what they use them for. I, I don't think they use them for dispatch.
Because I think, well, because we were not getting portable or mobile. We're gonna get portable for their vehicles, right? That are eight hundred megahertz, so. I'm just making sure that they, they don't, they understand that these are not gonna work under the eight hundred megahertz. Other than that, I have no problem with this.
I mean, it, it seems like you're telling us we have no need for them.
Correct.
There's, there's no value really to them to speak of.
I wouldn't think it'd be much.
We'll do a resolution once it gets to details.
So give us more details and I, I think.
I don't have a problem with it.
We're all supportive of the idea of.
Okay.
If there's somebody else in the county that can use them to some purpose and, and we can't, then why not make them available?
Right.
Okay, yep. Possibly as early as your next meeting, I'll, I'll have that information. The second item that I have is I have a request from Cambridge City Police Department for. For, for rifle rated ballistic vests that we currently have in our inventory. These, these rifle rated vests were purchased under Sheriff Kappa probably twelve or fifteen years ago. I think, if I'm not mistaken, their, their warranty or their expiration, if you will, was twenty years, so it's still well within that time period. And I think we have five total or complete sets that are, have not been issued that we have in our armory, or not armory, our quartermaster. This, yeah. They've got a date of June fourth, but I just received this last week.
So is there a difference between these and the ones that your guys use every day?
The only difference, I mean, they're still, they're still capable. There are differences. And without getting too far into weeds on that, they're both, or they're both designed to stop rifle rounds.
In other words, the ones your staff has will do this. This is not. And it's the wrap grade that only the SWAT team wears or something like that?
No, no. In fact, the ones that, that we've issued to our staff currently, well, our patrol staff currently are lighter and they're capable of, these are two capable of multiple hits. And there's, again, I'm going into weeds. There's less falling. There's a lot of advantages to the ones we've issued to our patrol division. However, we are still currently issuing these vests to our reserve officers, our CERT team, which is our jail SWAT team, if you will, courthouse security and so on. So we, we are still issuing them.
I think, I, I have no problem with it. Leave it up to the discretion of the sheriff, how many he has available and how many he can give, if he, any. He just said he's still issuing them, so. Do you have a number of how many you're thinking about donating?
They've asked for four and, and I only have five complete sets left in inventory. I, I need to, I need to check to see, you know, with my department, who doesn't have one, just to see.
I, I have no problem with it. Leave it up to the sheriff's discretion if he has them.
The potential difference legally, you know, I turned around on this, you know, the. The last issue with the radios, they have no value to us. We don't have a need for them. And now with these, you're saying that you're still issuing it to some of our, some of our staff? Does that change the?
Not as long as the recipient is, is a governmental entity.
Okay.
Basically, what I'm hearing, this is more, it's not valueless, obsolete, it is surplus.
Okay.
Based upon your current situation. So I think that, I mean, it's the same concept. We can do it to another.
And, and as you would replace, like the ones you're actually reissuing now to like the courthouse or the jail, you'd probably reissue new ones like your patrol staff has, I would assume? Or, correct me if I'm wrong on that?
No, I'm, I'm actually still issuing the, the ones that they're requesting to my current staff. And so right now I don't have sufficient funds to buy the new and upgraded vests for all of the others.
I, I, I agree with Brad. I'd leave it up to the discretion of the sheriff on what, what his needs are. And if these are surplus, then I don't have.
Well, they're surplus. I'm not sure they are, whatever.
Right.
What I could do next week when I come back on the radios then, I, I could report to you what my needs are.
Is that different from the Kevlar type vest that is?
Yeah, yeah. They're, the Kevlar, just the soft Kevlar vest won't, they're not capable of stopping rifle rounds.
And they're individually fitted normally?
They are individually fitted. These, these are capable of rifle, or stopping rifle rounds, but they are not individually fitted, so they're not.
One time we used some of the sheriff's extras to mine the benches of the judges underneath.
Oh.
That's been a few years ago.
So I, I'm perfectly okay with you making the decision. I just see a potential issue here of if you need to go back to council anytime in the near future.
And ask for, hey, I don't have enough.
New vests and, and they said, well, you just gave five of them away. So.
What do you see a complete set? What comprises a set, I guess?
Front, back, side plates and then the carrier, so.
Okay, so I see there, there are kind of like components that are assembled and then.
I personally would suggest, given my background with council, that you ought to, you ought to sound them out about it first and explain why this is something that you feel like you should do. And if, if after that conversation, you're, you're comfortable with it, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah. So I, I will, I'll also check the current distribution of vests to the rest of my staff. And if there are any needs, I'll certainly take that as priority.
Sure.
Yep.
Great.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Steve, I think we interrupted you in mid-strain there.
Okay, so you got in front of you a aerial shot off he can, this is our, you know, bank lot to the east, or yeah, to the east in the annex. Richmond Power Live is requesting to put a temporary pole just about where the tip of that painted arrow is.
Is it the red dot?
You can see the red dot.
It's right on the line?
Exactly. That, that's kind of where they put their post. And you can see there's a transform there. So what their request is, is to put a temporary pole there with a meter to supply power to the Elder Beerman Construction Site until they get to the point where they can, that they've installed permanent power. So this is a temporary power drop for the construction at Elder Beerman.
So are they also gonna approach the bank?
Well, so I re, I recontacted, I contacted our P and L and pointed out to him where he put this was properly right on the line. He would prefer to move that a bit farther south and stay on our property and not deal with the bank.
And did you talk to him about that tree?
I did.
Is obviously right smack in the middle of where that.
And that tree's not on our property. It's on the bank's property.
Exactly. That's, I don't, they can't possibly put a pole there without taking that tree out. At least trimming off all the south branches.
I'm wondering if they're simply, because to get to that transform, that's underground. There's no overhead line, so I'm wondering if they're just gonna put a pole in for a meter base for the power up to it and then run it back down.
Right, back underground?
Yeah.
Probably ought to, probably ought to find that out.
Does it make a difference whether you do it or not?
I think we ought to at least touch base with the. Bank if they're planning to take that tree out.
Why don't they, that's our problem.
Yeah, that's our, I think that's our P and L. We're a public entity that they have to do their due diligence. We're just giving permission to put the pole in. They have to follow the.
I understand their reluctance to want to deal with the bank.
I do too.
Yeah.
It took us, what, five years to get to, to acquire that parking lot?
Parking lot. And, and that, and that was easier structurally than what it is now, which getting somebody to talk to you twice.
Yeah, same person, right?
I, I would say to not delay the project. I'll make a motion if we approve it.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, same sign, aye.
I want to know what they're gonna do. I don't think we do.
That's, that's their, that's their issue on that.
It's all right.
We'll approve our side.
Motion passed. Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item, we have a application for a reduction in rental costs at the fairgrounds for not-for-profit event. This is the Boys and Girls Club. Fund losing events. See the narrative with the back part, the back page is the gist of what they're requesting. The, they indicate that a hundred percent of the proceeds from this event goes to program operations. And they are asking that the stage be provided at no cost. And the rental of the building, the same as last year. And then the extra day tear down at no cost. And then a discount on the table and chair rental. And down below there is what you approved last year. A fifty percent discount on the builder rental, fifty percent discount on the stage and twenty-five percent on the tables and chairs.
Discount on tables and chairs no longer applies to labor if we set up.
We don't discount our labor. We charge to set up.
Correct.
If, if we set up.
And we don't know if they're asking that or not. Okay. So.
You said that's October one. Did I see you just scratch it out there? It says September twenty ninth and then.
October first, yeah.
Wednesday.
So that, they added.
Twenty ninth through October first.
Oh, so what is actually, okay, set up and take down?
Yeah. Because it's one, instead of three days, they want it for four days.
Yeah. And I assume October first is the tear down day?
Correct.
And they're advancing the thirty first, right? The thirtieth or something, thirty first?
Thirty first, I think.
It's not, it's the thirty first of September. We'll go thirty.
That's right. Maybe that's why they scratched out the thirty first and put the first. So there, it's three days, twenty-nine, thirty and, and the first of October. So I would guess then that it's the thirtieth. So this is what we did last year. What, what, so far this year, we have, we have raised the price from what we did in twenty twenty-four, have we not? In the, the overall price? Well, no, the price that we charge to not-for-profits. Because we started out a few years ago.
On a case-by-case basis, yeah.
Went up, I think the truck group ramped it up incrementally. And we did the same with the chamber. And I'm, I'm not opposed to a discount, but the question, you know, we started out with, with not-for-profits being the twenty-five percent discount from what for-profits would pay. And so now they're proposing, what, paying thirty-seven and a half percent? Of what's for-profits pay.
I thought we were gonna try to be more consistent.
Exactly. So that's what, that's what I'm trying to get at. What can we do with the chamber and?
Remember, we didn't, we didn't charge, we didn't charge the chamber for the stage.
Correct.
And we gave them a, a discount on the tables and chairs.
Comparable, this was a twenty-five percent discount?
Yes.
Okay. And so essentially, that's the same discount as we give not-for-profits for the building.
Correct.
Is standard is a twenty-five percent discount.
Just saying, I thought we had a policy on not-for-profits.
We do, but.
So I guess one of the issues is, are they asking for a fifty percent discount from the not-for-profit rate or from the standard rate?
From the standard rate.
Okay. So that would mean that instead of seventy-five percent of the standard rate, they would pay fifty percent.
Right, that's what they're asking for.
Okay. And the stage we give to the chamber for free. Tables and chairs we give a twenty-five percent. I, you know, I would hope at some point we could get to.
That was the whole point of doing that, by the way. I mean.
Exactly.
And we said that we were gonna have a transition year and this is our transition year, right?
I mean, yeah. So I, I, and I guess I could be persuaded to do it this year.
Do what? What they're asking?
What they're asking. They're already doing the discount on the tables and chairs. That's built into the, the current policy, I think.
And we're, what's our policy on the stage? Is it fifty percent?
Same, same thing. It's seventy, it's, it's a seventy-five percent.
But again, we gave it for free to the chamber.
So why don't we do the stage for free and then?
And then us, and then they charge the seventy-five percent for the building? Because that's a lot more than the stage rental.
Yeah.
And what about the free day? Who's setting?
Did we give the chamber a free day?
Yes.
Yes, the tear down day.
Yeah, tear down, extra day.
So, you know, I would be okay with, with doing something with an additional discount for this year. But in the future, next year, we need to get to that.
And just make sure that's communicated in the issue too, yes.
This is going forward.
Yes.
It's this. And we will do a twenty-five percent discount for not-for-profits.
So am I hearing yes to the free day, yes to the free stage, forty-five percent on the tables and chairs and twenty-five percent on the expo?
Yeah, which twenty-five percent is what they asked for on the tables and chairs.
Yeah.
The only thing, they asked for fifty percent just on the stage, so we're giving that to them for free, so do seventy-five percent.
You want to go to seventy-five percent, which is our actual charge for it.
Up at the top there, they did ask for the stage free. Last year we charged fifty percent.
Oh, this was last year?
This is last year, so that's it.
Okay. So they did ask? Okay, so they did ask for.
Yeah, they did, up here says stage, no charge.
Which again is what.
And they want the same. We did it for the chamber, so, yep.
I'm good with the stage for.
I, I agree.
And then what about the hall?
What'd we do for the chamber?
I think they paid, yeah, I think it was seventy-five percent. But then we gave an extra day.
Right, yeah. And we're giving these guys an extra day.
I say we do the same as.
Seventy-five percent.
Which will be a two-day charge, because the, the tear down day will be for free, correct? The third day, right?
Yes.
Quick, thanks.
Well, the, the setup day is free anyway, right?
Yeah, there's some setup days built into that.
I don't know. Okay, they just need an extra day.
What day did you say the event was on?
The thirtieth.
The thirtieth, so they want the twenty-ninth, thirtieth.
So twenty-nine to be setup day.
Thirtieth event, but if it's the first, it'll be a free day.
Twenty-nine will be free anyway because of setup.
Right.
Right.
So, yeah, um, yeah, let's do that.
Can we have? Our policy comes with the schools. Do we have special protocols for alcohol use or as far as security, as far as, uh?
Yeah.
Ram shop act?
For the what?
Liquor liability?
Yeah, we don't, you know, they have to have a.
License and a liquor license.
And then they, where their name is initially insured on that for the event.
Yeah, because we asked, we asked for that.
Well, let's approve this, and I have another question on top of what he's asking here, so.
Okay.
I want my other waters.
Steve, you're, you're clear on what we're suggesting?
Yeah, so I'm, I've got twenty-five percent discount on the tables and chairs, uh, the stage is free, seventy-nine percent on the expo hall.
Well, twenty-five percent discount.
Yeah.
Twenty, yeah.
Mixing your metaphors there.
I just want to see if you had attention.
He was.
I always pay attention to you.
And, and I had really actually said what kind of pole that was too, you just didn't hear. But I've forgotten now what I said.
Because you weren't listening to you.
Okay, can we move on?
Because I wasn't listening to me either, and a free day.
Yeah.
And a free day.
I, I'll make a motion, uh, that we approve what Steve just stated. And he doesn't even sure what he knows.
I know, he does.
What kind of pole did we approve?
He doesn't even know what he stated. I'll send you that.
Not that it matters, it's the contact person that's seeing last year is this year, you know?
You know, I don't know.
I mean, I think the communication piece, in the beginning, we're trying to get uniformity, so, you know, nothing against their organization.
Right, right. And Haley's been pretty good about telling these folks, this is coming to me.
Good.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same side, motion carries.
And I want to see that in writing before we communicate with the Boys and Girls Club.
Are you questioning what I'm thinking?
No, just what you remember.
What kind of pole?
You know, between me and you, you lose things and I forget things.
Exactly, hey, that's a great team.
I resemble both. So my, my questions are what, uh, Ron was bringing up about the alcohol and security. So it's been brought to my attention now that these event holders are not hiring the Sheriff's Department for security, and I thought it was a policy that it must be the Wayne County Sheriff's Department, not outside agencies.
I thought it was a police officer, but I don't, I don't remember how it's spelled out.
Well, it's been brought to my attention that they're not even offering it to, on our.
Well, remember.
So I wanted to clarify, because they're asking me, it's like, I.
If you remember, at one of our fairgrounds, many, uh, was it the tourism, they, they, there's a place where they go to get these people, these officers.
It's a program.
Yeah, I forget what it's called.
And, uh, it's a police officer, it's not necessarily the sheriff, but if you're.
Can, can we just check whatever policy we have?
It's, it's called roll calls, but it's, it's put out there, but.
And that's where they go to get these officers.
They have to have arrest powers, so.
Yeah, yeah, so, but, but if you want our policy to be highly sheriff's deputies.
I just want to check and see what our policy.
I think we need to look at it, and, and I think we should be able to offer it to the county employees first. And if they can't get it, I mean, obviously then they go elsewhere, but why would we not? If it's not even being offered to the county employees first? Because it is a county building, and I mean, we're out there.
But I'm, I'm not sure that's how it's working, I think they go to that roll call and.
And if that's the case, maybe we should visit that and look at that.
Let's, let's find out what the policy is and, and we'll.
Because I guess there's a big event this weekend and.
Nobody knew about it.
Well, there's, yeah, our department didn't know about it, but other.
Into the truck show this?
Yeah, what is it?
Truck show, that square body truck show.
Oh, so, and mainly, I mean, if they're really bringing in officers from outside the county to work our county.
Is that, is that roll call, including officers for all?
I'm not sure exactly how it works, but I would, I think if, if Randolph County has signed up for it, then they, their wage is less than what the wage here, they'll hire them over.
Okay, because I, because that's the same, uh, program that tourism passes out to other places too, that want to hire officers, so. Okay, okay, we'll, we'll bring this back and see what.
And I will say, what happens is, is if they hire somebody outside of Wayne County, a, a police officer outside of Wayne County, they have an issue, what happens is, is that those officers then call local law enforcement to come and deal with it. Because they know the procedures for the prosecutor's office, different things that are, they're different in every county, they truly are, so.
I mean, yeah.
All right, and then, uh.
Brad, to your email about the Centerville Two Mile Fringe.
I offered to Bill Saps, meet with him.
Okay. I threw it out a couple of days to him, I've not heard anything back from him yet, but.
Long as we're doing our part, because I keep getting texts from him.
I know, and, you know.
Which Bill Saps is that?
Jerry Reynolds. It's the, well, he's the Centerville.
Code enforcement or whatever.
And, uh, you know, it's this two-mile fringe thing with what's our responsibility and what's their responsibility. I looked at their, I, I gotta tell you frankly, their zoning code is woefully outdated.
Well, I know we talked about that before, and so it's like, because you had went to them several years ago.
Yes, I did, and what they've got posted on their website is still their zoning code from nineteen fifty-seven.
Geez. That might be a problem.
And I think, I think that is part of the problem, but anyway, so I've.
As long as you get with him and you can just work it out.
And I thrown out a couple of days to meet, and we'll see if he gets back with me, so, okay.
Thank you, they've incorporated a lot of properties since then.
Yeah. And then you, you got my email on the synopsis of my meeting with IDIM and the old landfill that's been. You know, I'm not a, this is an area of law that seems very, uh, commonly specialized. It just doesn't make any sense to me that a law from nineteen seventy-four.
Would still be enforced when.
When it's changed.
Two or three iterations since.
Yeah, and, and regulations have changed, that those changes.
So now they don't have to do the.
It's thirty-year, that's what we were working under, but apparently they.
Say that since ours was closed under this particular act, that we're still, and I even went to the IDIM website and it does list it as, it's, they worded as a, I think, an obsolete rule that's still being enforced by things that were closed prior to this date.
Is that, is that something eventually that we want to take to the legislature?
Well, I, I think.
What's, what are we not doing that they say we should be doing?
The closure of it basically had three criteria. Number one was to keep, uh, three foot of cover over the materials below. And so anytime there's a sinkhole, you're supposed, you're supposed to go out and fill those sinks.
That three foot, it was there thirty years ago, it's gone.
It's gone, yeah. So, so Mike had done that over the years until the thirty-year point, and then we've been having somebody mow it, and.
When did we abandon it?
So the thirty-year point would have been up in two thousand thirteen. Because it was closed in eighty-three. And that's the official quote, which is, was stopped a huge part of that, but the official closure date was eighty-three, so thirty years put us up in two thousand thirteen, so that's when we stopped maintenance on it. So what prompted this was, you know, Duke Energy going out and drilling some holes out there to move to, they were, it's under a pole replacement, and that's when they discovered it was an old landfill, and that's how IDIM, you know, because IDIM hasn't been here, well, since two thousand thirteen. So, so we've got some responsibility according to IDIM, and, uh, you know, I don't know what.
What are they proposing, they want to see a plan from us going forward, or?
So the, the inspectors done back in January, and they identified a couple of load places that needed to be filled in. And then they indicate that on the southwest corner, uh, that there's some leachate. I don't know how they identify that, uh.
They were there after a heavy rain?
Possibly, yeah. Did they identify what it was?
No, no. So Mike, or I, I guess, it seemed to me Mike needs to be directed to take care of these issues.
And, and reports need to be filed?
You're supposed to do a report, you're supposed to inspect it every six, twice a year. Doesn't say every six months, I mean, twice a year.
And then file a report.
And it's self-reporting. Now, while I was there on site, Duke Energy was there as well, and there's been some other of these old landfills that have closed. And Duke has a, a program, uh, where they put, they take it and they put solar panels on it. And then they become, and then part of the agreement is they become responsible for the maintenance.
Maintenance.
For the maintenance of it.
So they become the owner of the property?
Yeah, so I, so I went to the Duke site, and it, it looks like they become the owner of it in exchange for these solar panels that then give you a credit towards electricity.
Gives the county a credit towards electricity?
By some percentage, I believe they don't get all of this.
Buy electricity from Duke?
Yeah, no.
Doesn't the gateway do?
It was on a grid. Yeah, yeah. So we've got, and I think the highway department's on it too.
I would imagine they are too, yeah.
So the, the question then is, there's a form to submit to see, to, to them.
To tell them that, okay, we have saved or seen this, and then they'll evaluate the site. It's about a thirty-nine acre site, but there's some wooded area on it, whether that, whether that is enough to clear, to make it viable, I don't know, but. Well, what do you think about applying at least?
I, I think it's a great idea, that way we, it takes our, us off the.
Exactly.
Maintenance and the liability part.
Yeah, and those transmission poles are right there, so that makes it at least an attractive site.
Are they along the road or what?
Well, you know where Swolton goes down makes it.
Yeah, cuts around, yeah.
They, they follow Swolton, but they don't cut around the road, they just keep going straight, so they go straight through the property. And then they go towards Graysworth, and they actually serve, it, it, it's actually a transmission line that serves their, uh, senators.
So they have a utility easement right through the, right through the middle of the county landfill?
I looked on, it just seems odd.
I do, I agree with you, it does, um, you know, I didn't look at the deed.
And I guess, you know, which came first, the landfill or the easement? I don't know.
Well, the landfill was put in in seventy, seventy-one, so.
There may have been.
Yeah.
Power lines there before that.
And I don't know what the history of Swolton was, and, uh, because it ends down there, I don't know, at some point in time, and it reached across the, I don't know, but.
Anyway, I, let's, let's pursue the application, I mean, we don't have to commit to it.
No, pursue and see what they say.
Right, and then, what, what this will do is just prompt them to do an assessment of the site.
And in the meantime, it sounds like we've got to get on the schedule to.
So twice a year, so you go out there two weeks apart?
Right.
Since you have to file a report, is it a report of abnormal findings or just a report?
The way I read it is this, it says you, you have to file a report regardless of what you find. That's way, but for obsolete rules, it's harder to interpret.
So, so.
And then even, even what was posted on, on the IDIM website, because they had a, had a link to this rule, but the whole rule wasn't there, it got cut off at the, like, page twelve.
Well, I had to go to the, to get you the rules, I had to go to the state library.
Yeah, and, and the one I asked you for was the one that had the thirty-year timeframe on it.
Right, the seven, ninety, was it ninety-three or whatever it was?
Yes, ninety-four, I think, ninety-four. And, and so.
Many new closures, there's, there's that thirty-year time limit, unless there's issues that it.
It keeps extending.
Or, uh, if you reach that thirty-year limit, then you've had no issues that.
So, so if Duke Energy, we apply, they take over the, the property, do we still have to continue our two?
No, they become the Duke.
They, they do that, perfect.
So they would as soon as.
They would take that off of the ownership of the property.
Correct, and, and, and we've already, part of the closure, we had to put in, we had to make a new deed. Yeah, to show that this was a previous landfill, so that's in place to, so the new owner has to take over the maintenance of it. And that's the way the rule is, is that any subsequent owner would be responsible for it. Now, we've chosen over the years not to sell it, and we've talked about this over time, but.
Well, and one of the things we discussed was whether or not to approach IMPA about whether they would have any interest in putting solar panels.
And I was not aware of Duke Energy's program, but apparently they've done it to other sites similar to this, so.
Well, in the meantime, while, let's, let's reach out to them and see if they might have similar programs. It seems like it would make more sense for Duke, since they've got transmission lines right there.
Correct. And then I'll just, I'll just articulate to Mike.
You're adding this on to your responsibilities, and he was so happy with thirty years.
I know, he was, he was really happy. Okay.
All right.
And then, uh, the last thing, you know, we're, we've been talking about this, uh, Land Bank, who, you know, is progressing towards this. Is there some point in time I've been asked this question? Should we, on my meetings that I have with the EDC and the Land Bank, should, should a person from council be involved in these meetings?
Um, there, there is now a, at least a preliminary budget that, uh, that the EDC has come up with.
Right.
Of about two hundred thousand dollars a year.
Yep.
That they're proposing would be split fifty-fifty between the county and the city. So that obviously is going to prompt some interest from council in how do we, how do we fund this and why would we fund this?
Correct, yep, yep.
You know, it's, it's not an insignificant amount of money.
So you want to put this question to Max, is it?
Yeah, I think, well, let's, let's discuss it with Max and let's, uh, let's maybe bring it up at the next workshop.
Well, our next.
Not the next workshop, but in September, uh, because they've got their hands full, I think, this, in August. But, uh, if we bring it up in September, have Valerie come in and maybe even the guy from, from the Land Bank Company with.
Intent.
Intent, uh, to talk about their, their findings and their plan, uh, and really bring everybody up to speed on what this might do for us, you know, it's a, essentially a way to take some of these vacant properties, derelict properties that end up in a commissioner's sale every year, uh, and, and do something with them that this, this organization as a, as a not-for-profit can do that, that the county maybe can't do, uh, like put stipulations on, uh, what a.
that, that the county maybe can't do, uh, like, put stipulations on, uh, what a buyer might do with the property, what kind of timeline that they have other than statutory timelines, you know, that you have to make these improvements within this period of time, or it goes back to the land bank. So there's, there's some benefit certainly to have the land bank, but whoever owns it, whether it's the county, the city, or.
It has to be maintained.
It still has to, the grass has to be mowed, and.
Right, so is, is this the same land bank that we've been talking about with the city? Like, they're holding back some properties on Main Street that they don't give part of this land bank?
No.
Okay.
Not at all, not at all, that is a, a trust, uh, it's, it's, um, Pago.
Pago, that's.
Pago, they've been talking to about that.
Okay, I, I would make sure it wasn't the same.
No, it's, they're completely different, completely different. Okay, anything else, Steve? The tree came down.
It did.
The dead tree over on the courthouse property.
They did a nice job.
Can't even tell that it was ever there.
Yep.
They did a nice job.
Who did it?
Fox. All right, if there's anything else, let's, Aaron, what have you got for us?
First thing I have is a High Point report.
Okay.
We had a visitor from Norway, and a visitor from Mexico City. Just want to share that with you, that's, I, I just mentioned the out-of-country ones, because I think it's very interesting. Yes, well, you know.
She would always point those out, too.
We have three hundred and fourteen visitors in the period of a month, I mean, it gets a lot of visitors up there, I like it.
Put a lemonade stand up there, make some money.
I know, right, I mean, we, we should talk to, uh.
That's three hundred and fourteen.
Hey, what is it?
Dollar, charge a dollar.
Something, I don't know. That's all I have, other than, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, commissioner minutes from July sixteenth. Second.
I always think he's going to say more, and I'm like waiting for him to.
Kind of looks. I like it, I like it.
We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same side, motion carries.
And then I would like to make a motion to approve the following claims, let paid, uh, seven twenty-one twenty-five, and general claims, seven twenty-three twenty-five. Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the claims, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same side, motion carries, anything else, Aaron?
That is all I have.
Bobby, you have a hotel rate increase for us?
Yes.
Excited about it.
For the commissioner's office, it's one room, three nights in French Lick for two hundred and four dollars.
Who's that for? I'm not approving that.
It's for the AIC.
I'm not going.
I'll make a motion to approve the rate increase.
For your, for your room?
Four hundred and sixty dollars for you. One night.
Right, oh my gosh, I'll second it.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second.
You didn't add my statement there.
Any further discussion?
Alcohol bill on anything.
Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. Wow, I just have to be more.
Thank you, I appreciate that, I know, know that you still are speaking to me when you. Way you lay me like that. Peterson Consulting contract, oh, you got something else, is that another?
I have something else.
Okay.
Um, the surveyor's office has a request to transfer money in the General Drain Fund for the Quig and Russell Ditches. Um, it's statutory that they have to do to repay back as they slowly get money into their accounts. So, for the Quig Ditches, two thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and ten cents, and the Russell Ditches, two thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Do the permanent commissioners approve transfers on that?
Definitely you can, the question is, should you do it while you're sitting as the drainage board?
Drainage board, right?
See, I thought that would, well, would we though, or?
Normally, I, I think, I would think.
Maybe the drainage board, yeah.
Obviously, you approve assessments, taking that into account, Ditches two is the. That's the drainage board.
But can the drainage board approve their own transfers?
Should, does counsel need to be involved? Does counsel need to be involved for a transfer?
I would think it's more internal, and, and actually, he's, that's kind of statutorily driven, I think.
See, yeah, we've had this discussion before, and I, I think, and I don't want to be in conflict with the auditor's office.
No, but it's by statute that they have to do it anyway, I still don't know why it needs to be approved.
I agree, I, I think this is something they have the statutory order to do. The.
That's what I thought, yeah. So, so we have to be, we have to be.
Commissioners. Correct, but.
I know we've done it before, and the drainage.
There's no emergency nature to it, this is just. I wouldn't think so, why don't we just put it on the agenda for the next drainage?
As the president, you ditch wood. I can't, we'll do that, put that on our agenda for next time.
I think that's special.
I do, too.
And I'm glad to defer that to you, alright. Now, the Peterson Consulting contract?
Yes.
Yeah?
Oh, oh, I should talk, okay, it's for assess value, it's every year contract, and we should re-sign value, it's about four thousand, it's similar price like last year.
And, and this is to, uh, do the inventory for per-state requirements.
And we need to use it in.
To the other one, which is for insurance purposes, so this one.
This is gas.
This is our, this is our, our. Capital.
Capital asset. Capital asset inventory, which we've.
Twenty-five thousand dollar threshold, yes. And so, we've been using this same company for several years, and so, you're looking for us to approve the contract and to sign it, but does somebody have the contract, you need to give it to me, did you, I know I saw it, but. She left it with me, because.
I hope she says it's.
Have it with me.
That would be grounds for disciplinary action, I think.
I was hoping she'd say something else.
I may have misplaced that one.
We can review on her though, before we.
Well, we, we may have to, we may have to, okay, so, again, is there, is there some urgency to that?
I mean, no, no urgency.
So next week will be fine, and we'll have copies of that to review, and we'll have, we'll have.
Make sure Ron reviews it.
Okay, and it's, like I said, it's four thousand dollars and change, um, as opposed to the seventy thousand for the insurance. Okay, Bobby, anything else?
Nope, that's all I have.
Ron?
Are we, has our insurance real been tied up in all particulars, particularly cyber insurance and all that?
I believe so.
I think we're down on that.
Steve, anything else?
No.
Okay, so, remember we've got a meeting of the Ops Board Executive Committee at noon today, we do.
Where?
Uh, right here, you can stay in that chair if you want.
Move around and see what's going on.
So. Just call if you need any help, um, Steve believes, I talked to him earlier, that it, that's not a meeting that, uh, is streamed by the state statute, so we weren't planning to do that, do you concur? What do you need between now and noon to?
Or does it need to be somewhere else other than this room, so that we have?
It wasn't driven by being in this room, but I, I want to get to the bottom of it before, before Steve leaves, our cameraman.
Before our favorite Steve leaves.
If, if we need to be streamed, I.
Well, sorry, agenda consists of matters that are related to security.
It's, no, it's to the contract for nine-one-one.
Such as our emergency, emergency communication.
Correct.
Is that, is that security?
Okay, so. Okay.
That's kind of where, that's kind of what we decided, they, you know, we went through. When you and I looked at the list, or?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, again, I, alright.
New territory.
So, anything else that we need to discuss, anything from the auditor's office?
No, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much, if there's nothing else, we're adjourned.